Hi all, it's uh 7:03 and I'm gonna call this meeting to order. So can we all stand to recite the pledge? Okay, with that, we will now move on to the public, sorry, hold on. We will move to the public hearing portion of our meeting. Do we have Lil Perron, GEA online?
Yes, you do.
Take it away, Lil.
All right. Well, unfortunately, I cannot be there in person for you all. I'm on a business conference, but cannot miss this very important meeting. Good evening, board members, Greenwich parents, community members, and our GEA family. First of all, Happy New Year. This is a new year, and with this new year, we all have the opportunity to reflect on what changes we can make in our lives to be mentally and physically healthier, happier, and better human beings. Tonight, I am asking the following from our board members and all members of the Greenwich community. What changes and decisions can you make to ensure that our children and our teachers have the best learning and teaching environment so that all students have the equal opportunity to reach their highest academic potential and to be mentally and physically healthier, happier, and better human beings? Unfortunately, we need better answers than the ones we've received so far. You see, we are now where we always appear to be, doing the same thing over and over again. And guess what? We already know that the results we have will have a negative impact on our students. So where are we? The budget is presented, and no matter what it contains, it is always sent back with significant requests of cuts, cuts that impact the education of thousands of students in our public schools. And you're forced to go through and look for efficiencies and ultimately make the cuts that have a significant impact on personnel, resources, and student outcomes. This scenario repeats itself every year, and we're back once again facing a stark reality. Our schools, which cannot withstand any more cuts, are being defunded once again. That's the reality we face here. Dr. Jones has presented a fiscally responsible budget that our students and teachers need in order to produce the outcomes that the community expects our students deserve and our teachers require. You need to support our superintendent. Take a stand and say enough is enough. No more cuts to a budget that can't afford to be defunded anymore. The past three budgets, we have cut everything possible that doesn't affect instruction, secretarial staff, Havermeier staff, HR staff, district-wide teaching supplies and resources that are needed and no longer available. Last year's budget cuts have negatively impacted students, teachers, class sizes, and student supports. 10.3 teachers were cut last year, and we have seen the impact of having a larger class size for students and staff. Greenwich Public Schools, according to the information in the budget, has the largest class sizes in grades two, three, four, and five as compared to Darien, New Canaan, Westport, and Wilton. Now there's nothing left to cut. You're going to potentially vote tonight on cuts that will hurt our students and teachers and administrators even more. Is that the message you want to send to the town, a town that has made its voice heard loud and clear that it does not support these cuts? You already know the facts of what is driving the needed increases, which are mandated by state statute or just out of our district control. Now you're planning on voting on cuts to some of our special areas, ALP, physical education, and Spanish? Cutting any of our specials would be detrimental to our children. At all time dedicated to special is essential for the education of the whole child. Many elementary classroom teachers only receive planning time when their students are at specials. Cutting any special would be detrimental to our teachers, and it would decrease the amount of time they have to meet with their colleagues and prepare the rigorous, high-quality lessons the town of Greenwich expects from their educators. Here are only a few things teachers do in their prep time. Teachers have many platforms that they have to log on daily to input data, NTSS, multi-tiered systems of support, Google Classroom, IABA, running record, chapter unit tests, responding in meeting with parents, finding resources for lessons, going through vetting rubics, teaching themselves how to U-Dibbles, reviewing Hagerty, new TCU units, planning, planning small group lessons. I could go on, but I know I'm being timed, and there is a time limit. And that's only if teachers don't lose their prep time because they have to cover a class that there aren't any subs, or there has to be a para, but we don't have one, or cover recess, or lunch duty, or special meeting, or PPT. Lastly, you are mistaken. If you think cutting physical education, adding more instructional time, is going to help our youngest and needy students, the research data speaks for itself. The Institute of Medicine reported that physically active students are more focused, better retain information, and problem solve more successfully than their less active peers. Instead of asking how many positions and resources we can cut from our schools, we should be asking why the town won't support the budget that we need to provide services for all our students, and not on the backs of our teachers doing their job, but also the jobs that are vacant and the jobs of others that aren't there. The board makes thousands of dollars, all of which the BET never funnels back into our schools as other districts do. Greenwich has the ability and the funds to ensure our district continues to strive for excellence above and beyond other districts in our area. Stop cutting necessary teacher positions from our school. GEA does not support any of these cuts. GEA urges the board to vote no on all these cuts. Have the courage to say no. Have the courage to face the truth. Do the right thing because it is right. Send this budget through to the next level, and let them vote against this budget for our children, our most precious resources, and let them be known and accountable for their vote. Just say no. Thank you all.
Thank you, Lil. Next up, our PTAC president, PTAC, PTAC President John Fisher.
Chair Protem Hirsch, BOE members, Superintendent Dr. Jones, everyone here, everyone listening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak, and Happy New Year. I'm John Fisher, the PTA Council President, parent of two of the 8,611 great kids in the Greenwich Public Schools. We're here to talk about the operating budget. More accurately, we're here to talk about how we're going to shoehorn the financial needs of the district, those 8,611 great kids in the Greenwich Public Schools that I just referred to, into a seemingly arbitrary 4.3% guidance from the BET. The BOE passed several budget-cutting resolutions at the December meeting, and now we're revisiting the few others at the board deferred to the Budget Committee and to tonight's meeting. The board is painfully aware of what's really driving the budget needs. For the benefit of everyone else, let's just say it ain't GHS instructional staff, it ain't ALP instructional staff, and it ain't the minutes of PE in a week. What's driving the need for budget increases is the 5.6% increase in contracted cost obligations for labors, goods, and services. That 5.6% increase on more than 85% of the overall budget. Just to put a point on it, that 5.6% increase in contracted obligations under a 4.3% cap means the rest of the budget would have to absorb a 3% cut year-on-year. That's 3% cut at a time when inflation is more than 3%. And so in real cost terms, that's a 6% budget cut across everything that is not a contractual obligation. And that follows many years of cutting and cutting to get to previous BET caps. What's also driving the need for the budget increase is the 7.7% increase in utility costs. It's the increase in transportation costs, which, by the way, also benefits the private school families. It's the almost $900,000 in increased costs for substitute teachers. It's the necessary increased costs of providing special ed services to many of those 8,611 great kids in the Greenwich Public Schools. But wait, there's more. As Lil referred, alluded to, the district generates about $3.25 million in income that goes straight back to the town. If that revenue is credited to the proposed GPS budget, the year-on-year budget increase is only 4.35%. If that credit were given where that credit is due, the budget essentially meets the BET's guidelines. We've seen the letters to the editor suggesting that there's fat and possibly even featherbedding in the budget. There isn't. The truth is, this proposed budget continues the year after year after year of budget cutting in the areas that are not student-facing. This budget includes a 3.1% cut in the administrative budget, for example. As we said in our PTAC comments at the December meeting, the difference in where the proposed budget stands now and the BET guidance is a tiny, tiny amount for the town of Greenwich, but it's a big amount for the schools and the children. We again urge the BOE not to make the budget cuts to staffing or student-facing services and to include the items for per pupil allocation and the extended day at Ham Ave., which that community would really benefit from. We urge the BOE to tell the BET that the proposed budget is what the schools need, and it's what the BET needs to approve. And we urge you to also be sure to tell the Board of Selectmen that also. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, as I just wanted to remind the public that each person who's signed up will have three minutes to speak, and I'm hoping that we will keep it pleasant and polite. So, thank you. The next person to speak will be Pilar Lepara, followed by Eric and Jack Boudarak. I hope I pronounced that properly. Is Pilar here or online?
I'm not seeing her online. If you are online, please raise your hand.
Okay, well, if she's there and decides to raise her hand, we can come back to her. So next up will be Eric and Jack Boudarak. I don't know if they're here. Oh, I see them standing up, to be followed by Phil Demato.
You sure?
Yeah.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm sure you hear a lot about people speaking, how exercise leads to a better learning experience, and in the world of excess screen time and a childhood obesity epidemic, I'd much rather have my child lose his Chromebook than his gym time. However, that's... However, that's only part of it. As a former pro tennis player, I'm in no doubt biased that FIAID class is good for students because the movement, the introduction to sports to kids who would otherwise wouldn't have tried them. My son, for instance, a sports-crazed 10-year-old, had never walked a balance beam. But FIAID also allows kids to share in overcoming physical challenges or learning how to play as a team. These are social-emotional learning opportunities that can't be achieved by simply granting extra recess time. I've been to COSCOB School and taught tennis to kids with Mr. Demato and Mr. Fina. I could easily see that some of the kids had experienced playing before, but for most, it was the first time they'd ever held a racket. And in my experience as a third-grade basketball coach this year, I can confirm that half the team could not only catch a pass, let alone make a basket. And these are the parents who actually have the means to enable their kids to play basketball. I've seen the chart that shows how we have more PE minutes than they do in Darien and New Canaan. But please remember that Greenwich is a diverse community, socially, economically, and otherwise, and that for many children attending Greenwich Schools, PE class may be the singular resource for sports instruction. I understand there's tremendous pressure to cut spending, but for these reasons and many more, reducing PE is not the right choice. Thank you for the opportunity and the time to speak.
Dear Board of Education and Dr. Jones, my name is Jack, and I'm in fourth grade at COSCOB School. Recess and PE are my favorite parts of the school day because I love sports and running around. But I'm also in math ALP and spend a ton of my free time reading. I really think we should keep PE at 120 minutes per week because I always feel better after I have an hour of PE class, feel more focused for later lessons, and ready to sit still. Next, I don't believe you should cut Mr. Fina and other PE teachers, PE staff, from other schools because together they come up with some really creative ideas. For example, Mr. D and Mr. Fina set up a really fun Buddy the Elf journey to New York City Mini Golf Course the week before vacation. No offense to Mr. D, but I don't think he could have done it without Mr. Fina's help. Playing the mini golf course was probably my favorite class in my history at COSCOB. Mr. Fina also helps us out of the car in the mornings and has helped me feel better when I'm having tough days. Earlier this year, my parents suggested that I consider applying to Brunswick because they know how important sports are to me. Even though Brunswick fourth graders have three-hour-long PE classes per week, I knew that I wanted to stay at COSCOB for fifth grade because it has worked well for me so far. I love being a part of a neighborhood school community, but if PE does get cut to 80 minutes, it shows me that Greenwich Public Schools aren't making decisions that put our physical and mental health first. Physical activity is good for my body and for my mood, and I know it helps my learning too. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Jack. We love nothing more than hearing from our students, so thanks for coming tonight. Next up is Phil Demato, to be followed by Jocelyn Michaels.
Good evening. My name is Phil Demato, and I'm one of the PE teachers at COSCOB School, and I've been working in the district since 2009. In my 15 years, we have twice cut our coordinator. We faced the proposal of reduction in minutes in 2020, and here we are again defending a proposed cut to physical education at the detriment of our students because of budget constraints. The proposal of a reduction in minutes is a giant step backwards for the district. When I was hired, one of the things I was most impressed by were the consistent efforts of our coordinator, Colleen Mori, to advocate for a high-quality physical education, not only for the students of Greenwich, but for students throughout the state. She recognized the invaluable contribution physical education plays in developing student motor and cognitive skills as well as their emotional health. Taking an excerpt from the State Education Department's five-year plan, research studies over the past decade have consistently concluded that student health status and student achievement are directly connected, and that student health is one of the most significant influences on learning and achievement. It is well documented that today's youth are spending more time on devices and screens and are not as physically active as they once were. As PE teachers, we find creative ways to introduce fitness, athletics, and movement to our students to create a lifetime of, lifetime love of being physically active. We are a state-required subject area, submitting our fitness scores to the state to be included in SBA test results. A cut in physical education contact time will negatively impact our overall students' performance and health. There have been countless scientific studies about the benefits of physical activity on the academic performance of students. In fact, within my tenure, there was a period of time where scheduling was done with this in mind. Students would attend PE prior to the scheduled math block in their classroom. This was done following the research completed by Harvard Medical School Professor Dr. John Reddy, who observed the importance of physical activity on brain development. This research, however, is not new, but yet here we are again looking at reducing the physical activity of our youngest, most malleable learners and expecting an improvement in their test scores. The National Library of Medicine reports mathematics and reading are the academic topics that are most influenced by physical activity, and that children who participate in vigorous or moderate-intensity physical activity benefit the most. Greenwich strives to be the best in the classroom, in the performing arts, and on the playing field. Why then are we choosing to cut a discipline that has a direct correlation to academic performance and overall well-being?
30 seconds.
For whatever reason, it seems like our department is the first to the chopping block. As a district, we have been applauded for our unwavering commitment to physical education and for not falling in line with other districts who have cut their programs. Let's continue to take on that leadership role in the state. From academics to overall physical and emotional health, a cut to the amount of time students are physically active is not the answer. I ask for you to vote against this proposal and maintain the high-quality physical education program that our youngest students get and deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Jocelyn Michaels, and I heard that Ms. Lepara is here, so she can follow Ms. Michaels.
Hi. Good evening, Dr. Jones and members of the board. My son is a second grader at Riverside Elementary School and is a student of the physical education teachers, Mr. Bill Bagardis and Mr. J. D. Andrea, who are both here this evening. I hate to follow Jack, is it? Is that your name? Hard to follow Jack, but what I'm hoping to do here is tell you that Jack's story is not unique or alone. There are many of us who have kids who feel exactly the way that he does. I am here speaking on behalf of my son. Every day, my son's daily school report is solely a full recap of everything that happened in physical education, his favorite subject. He tells me about every new game he learns, Battleship, Candy Land, Watermelon, Polyspot Basketball, Wacky Crazy Kickball. Yes, these are all PE games, not board games. The various traditional sports that he gets to practice, he is also a sports-crazed kid, the friend who he was on a team with, the friend who he played against, the friends that got along, the friends that didn't get along, who helped who, and how every student participates because Mr. D makes it fun for everyone. After PE, my son says they go back to the classroom, and he feels relaxed and tired in a way that helps him focus for the rest of the day. These are words from my second grader. From the mouth of my child, why are they cutting our physical education time? According to the CDC, you're gonna hear a lot of this tonight, I'll just repeat it again, children six to 17 years old should do 60 minutes or more of moderate to vigorous physical activity every day. Participating in a high-quality PE program may provide numerous benefits for students, perhaps more than any other subject. Here is the list, because I feel like we haven't listed it succinctly like this. It encourages physical activity for life, helps prevent sickness and disease, provides an outlet for creativity and self-expression, develops cooperation and teamwork, builds self-confidence, provides opportunities for personal goal-setting, increases personal fitness and motor skill development, helps reduce stress and anxiety, strengthens relationships with others, and boosts academic learning. Already in second grade, and maybe even before that, we can see these things starting to take shape. Please don't cut the PE time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Pilar Lepara, to be followed by David Levine, oh, excuse me, Emily Kubick, then David Levine.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm also a mother from Riverside. I have four kids in the school system. I was here last meeting. I said I was sad about this situation. Today, I have to say I'm disappointed. I was late because I had to, one of my children has autism, changing his routine, not being there is a big challenge. But because of how important this budget thing is, I thought it was important to show this to you and to be here and speak for my children and for all the children in the district. The words this mom just said, it's like the same thing that I hear from my fourth grader and my first grader at Riverside, they're learning their social skills, plus the exercise that they need. It's a lot of hours sitting there. My daughter has ADHD, and she needs that exercise to let go some energy and just to be able to focus later on. What else can I say? Peace, fundamentally important. I was going to read an email my pediatrician sent to the board. You should have probably read it already, but it had all the information she just mentioned. So I'm just gonna, like, go back to her and just... Just that. But regarding the budget, I have to say, you should be pushing for more. The schools are already under budget. Special ed is under budget. Riverside has classes that are so big that teachers cannot handle them. We need more teachers. We need more special education. Right now, we have subs covering for special ed hours, which should not happen. We could go find lawyers and go and say the school district is not complying with the IEP. And, I don't know, I mentioned it before. I wonder if any one of you, any one of you took the time to go to one of the elementary schools or to any school and sit down, talk to a teacher, and ask them, what is it that you need? Because I feel like this board has that job. You need to help the schools. You don't need to fight for budgets for the BET. They should deal with that. They should find the money for our schools, for our children. They're gonna be handling the world tomorrow when you guys are retiring.
30 seconds.
I guess that's it. I mean, just please go and do the job that you wanted to do, that you were elected to do, and that we all are wanting for you to do, so that we can go and do our job with our children in the evening and not have to be here saying obvious things. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Emily Kubick, to be followed by David Levine.
Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Emily Kubick. I am the mother of a disabled child in the first grade at Riverside. I've lived in Riverside for 10 years, and I'm here to share my perspective and advocate first against any budget cuts, but also specifically on maintaining the current PE time. I would like to say that I reached out to parents from other districts that on the surface have quote-unquote "less PE time," including some mentioned on the list presented at the last meeting. What I found was that this is not a black-and-white issue. In some cases, districts supplemented less PE time with more recess time or are in the process of doing so. Darien, for example, plans to add an additional recess to non-PE days starting in the fall. Additionally, in some cases, there may be facilities limitations driving the dispersion, i.e. no separate gym and cafeteria. If Greenwich decides to take the view that being in line with other districts is a priority, I believe there is significantly more research to be done on what and why other districts are doing what they are, how much recess time there is, what other factors are at play, and what accommodations teachers may be making in their classrooms to compensate. In the interim, I want to explain why I believe that more PE time is particularly beneficial to kids like my daughter, who suffers from a very serious physical disability. Elodie cannot participate in sports outside of the safe environment that her PE teachers, who are seated behind me, have created for her and other students. Her PE time is her only opportunity to be on a sports team with other children and be exposed to a wide range of physical activities and games. Last year, she told me that her favorite part of kindergarten was PE, which to anyone who knows my family and knows my daughter's illness is nothing short of a miracle. I imagine that there are many other kids who also do not have the same opportunities for exercise and sports outside of the short amount of time currently allotted to them in PE class. Maybe both their parents work and can't shuttle them to after-school activities. Maybe the activities are cost-prohibitive. I know we all agree on the benefits of physical activity and breaks from screens that are ever-present, even in the classroom, so I would urge the board to, at the very least, pause this change until a more thorough review can be made on the costs and benefits to cutting a program that encourages inclusivity and likely disproportionately benefits some of the more disadvantaged kids in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, David Levine, to be followed by Lauren Toretta.
Good evening, Dr. Jones, board, and Greenwich community. My name is David Levine. I'm a member of the RTM for District One, where Julian Curtis is located, and I'm an executive committee member of the Julian Curtis PTA and a father of a fourth grader and a kindergartner at JC. I know budget decisions can be difficult, and I appreciate all of you are trying to do the right thing for our kids. But cutting the K through to foreign language program from Julian Curtis is a bad idea. It breaches the commitment that was made, that has been made to the community who chooses to go to JC. As you know, a survey was recently conducted of the magnet families. Ninety-six percent of them responded within three days because they care about JC. And seventy-two percent of those surveyed said they chose Julian Curtis for foreign language. Seventy-two percent also emphasized that the multicultural community of JC is why they chose the school. But it isn't just magnet students. My family chose to go to JC. We bought a home zoned for JC, just like many of our neighbors did. We choose to send our kids there rather than private school, and one strong reason is the foreign language in the academic programs at Julian Curtis. The educational program and the diversity of JC is an asset that we value that should not be devalued without good reason. On this New Year's Eve, my wife and I asked our kids what they were most proud of accomplishing in 2023. My five-year-old kindergartner said, "Learning Spanish." I said, "I'm proud of you too." We shouldn't be cutting these programs lightly. And as a representative of the PTA, my job is to advocate for the other parents who aren't able to be here. My job on the RTM is to advocate for those in our district who are homeowners, who value their homes and our community. And most importantly, my job as a father is to advocate for my kids. You know, it's truly perplexing why we're even here discussing this issue when I, when I think about it. This is supposedly a budget conversation. Yet this program, when we cut it, saves roughly zero dollars from the budget. So this particular item, we know at this point, isn't really about the budget. So as, as you reflect on your decision, I leave you with just one question. Given that we save zero dollars from cutting this program, how could you possibly vote to cut it? How confident are you in the non-financial decisions, non-financial reasons that have been introduced to a budget conversation to justify this decision? Are you willing to violate the commitment that's been made to the magnet students, to our District One community, to my family? I sincerely hope that you make the right decision and you vote this. Bad decision down. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Next up, Lauren Toretta to be followed by Chris Langell.
Good evening, and thank you for the time this evening. My name is Lauren Toretta. My three siblings and I are proud graduates of Julian Curtis Central Middle School, Greenwich High School, and now my two children attend Julian Curtis in kindergarten and fourth grade. And I'm the class parent, co-class parent, thankfully, for both classes. You know, the educational benefits of early exposure to language are proven readily available. And, and we're all very much aware of those benefits. But the language program at Julian Curtis goes beyond these proven benefits. It's the signaling of a multicultural and diverse school that accepts and advocates for global citizenship. At Julian Curtis, we celebrate our differences. The language program is universally loved by the students. And it's even loved more so by the parents because we see it as a symbol of our diverse community and we see it as aspirational towards it. A global and inclusive world that we can only hope for down the road. As a graduate of both Harvard College and Harvard Business School and currently as a business owner, I'm very much attuned to the dollars and cents of making these decisions. But I'd like to reiterate that the language program transcends these simple calculations. It's about values. It's about inclusivity. It's about the community, and these elements can't be quantified. They're essentially, they're priceless. So cutting the language program is relatively meaningless, as you just heard David reiterate, in terms of achieving both the savings and the math achievement goals that you're looking to obtain. And this isn't even about being a magnet school, although we are very proud of that, too. It's really, the language program is, is a part of Julian Curtis that we're incredibly proud of. It's part of our culture. It's who we are. And it's also, you know, the community and being a sense, having a sense of belonging for these children from very diverse backgrounds. It gives them confidence and helps them build the foundation for future academic and otherwise other successes. And we've heard that about the PE and also the additional benefits that having language exposure and being part of a diverse community lends itself to success down, down the road. So as you consider next steps, please don't undermine the values of our great community for just a rounding error. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Peter Langell to be followed by Peter Schwartzstein.
Good evening. Thank you to the members of the Board of Education and Dr. Jones for allowing me to speak on the topic of the proposed budget cut to physical education. It's a matter I feel strongly about. Hello as well to the parents and members of the community. My name is Chris Langell, and I have two children at Riverside Elementary School. I volunteer widely in town and at the school. I'm an active working parent within our school community. I coach youth sports and believe strongly in the benefit of these experiences for our children. My wife, Alyssa, is also a working mom who has an active role within the PTA and is a class parent for both our children at home, putting our kids to bed this evening. I want to use my time to make sure we're appropriately weighing the long-term impact of less physical education on our children's engagement. At this pivotal stage in our lives, regular physical activity is not just a tool for children to maintain physical health, but we know that, and you know all the studies around cognitive development as they've been mentioned over these meetings. So I'd like to do the one thing I know how to do is share my experience. On a personal note, as a child who suffered with dyslexia, I experienced firsthand the challenges of being, of learning differently at a young elementary school age. However, I found solace and success through physical education. PE not only provided a break from academic pressures of finding classwork harder than it appeared many of my peers were due to being cognitively different, but it also helped improve my concentration and self-esteem. My personal experience echoes the findings of Dr. John Ratty, which have been mentioned, and his excellent article, "Exercise in the Brain." The evidence alongside my own journey underscores the immense value of incorporating physical education into a curriculum for this aged child. In today's world, where elementary school children are increasingly exposed to screens and large class sizes, as well as, as over the stress of academic achievement, which we seem comfortable imposing at increasingly younger ages, the importance of physical education in elementary school cannot be overstated. Regular physical activity provides a necessary balance to the screen time. It fosters mental and emotional well-being. It offers a unique opportunity for children to engage in social interactions and collaborative activities, which are often limited in large classroom structured settings. I know from my own experience that the skills learned through physical education are crucial for kids and often provide a source of balance. I believe that we all think the most important thing is a lifelong process of teaching kids how to learn. That often happens outside of the classroom. That was critical for me and I'm sure for many others. With that, I humbly ask you to avoid the limiting of physical education.
Thank you very much. Next up is Peter Schwartzstein to be followed by Patrick Miziano.
Thank you for the time to speak. My name is Peter Schwartzstein. I have three kids in Greenwich Public School System. My daughter started kindergarten back in 2017. This is only my second time speaking at a Board of Ed meeting. The last time was October 2021. Dr. Jones, you may remember that night. There was another speaker who held up a poster with your phone number on it. I promise to not dox anybody tonight. But in all seriousness, thank you for everything you all do. We as parents, I think, understand how difficult this process is. The reason I'm here is to speak as a parent of ALP students and, and try to really communicate the fact that ALP is beneficial, not just to the students in that program, but to all the students. I'm a former teacher. I'll be honest, I only made it two years and then I flamed out. But I was teaching in inner-city New York City. So I saw a very extreme case of students coming into a class with many different levels of reading, of preparation, and how difficult for me personally that was to try to teach to a sixth-grade reader and a first-grade reader and a third-grade reader all at the same time. And I just wanted to really emphasize this because I feel like it's something that's, that's sort of missed, that this is a program that has been so successful in Greenwich. It allows not just for students who need additional, you know, attention, additional accelerated work, whatever the case may be. It also allows for the students who are in the classroom, from which students were pulled out, to get more individualized, personalized time and personalized attention. The other thing is, you know, we're talking about, you know, from the last meeting that you had, the talk was basically taking two full-time ALP teachers per school, reducing it to 1.7 or to 1.8. And I think the big issue with that is, so you're now saying one teacher either has to travel or that teacher has to take less than a full pay. I just think that the problem with this is it's not going to encourage teachers to stay. It's not going to help with recruiting new teachers when vacancies happen. We need to continue to retain the teachers we have. We have amazing teachers in Greenwich. We should not be talking about something where, again, like forcing teachers to travel is not efficient. Having two full-time ALP teachers per school has worked so well in the last couple of years. So I just want to end by saying, I think it sends a terrible message to cut ALP spending at this time when we should be focusing on every academic program we have and supporting it to the full extent that our town can. I didn't have the benefit of a program like this when I was a kid. Yeah, I turned out fine. But I think students really benefit. Bonnie will tell you, it's important to have this education starting in second grade. We shouldn't overlook that. And again, I want to thank you for, for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Patrick Miziano. I, I'm sure I butchered that, so I apologize profusely.
Significantly better than my wedding.
Well, there you go. Score one for me.
Once I got married, they called me Chris Prevalone, so go figure. Pat Miziano is pretty close to Miziano.
And then comes Bill Bagardis.
Uh, I guess you could figure out, I'm going to talk about phys ed based on my hat and not new curbs in the school systems. Good evening, Dr. Jones and the Board of Education. My name is Pat Miziano. I'm a lifelong Cos Cob resident. I'm a parent. I am a teacher at North Mayanis School. I understand that hard decisions need to be made regarding next year's school budget. However, cutting physical education thirty-three percent should not be an option. I could talk till I'm blue in the face about the correlation between physical activity and early childhood development, but I don't have the time to do so. So I'm going to try to make this as quick as possible for you guys. In PE class today, you will often see interdisciplinary lessons with science, math, and social studies. Some examples are during diamond sports, we teach force and motion. For orienteering, we teach map skills and finding, I'm sorry, finding landmarks on a map and using a compass. For the state mandated Pacer tests, we give students a baseline test and teach each student about percentages and a realistic goal. PE is where students learn to win with grace and lose with dignity. It's a place where children learn character and empathy. PE is a subject where there is competition and sportsmanship. PE is a pillar of the Greenwich vision of the graduate. PE is a place where we have a lot of competition, but there is a main focus on sportsmanship, which some of them do not get outside of school. PE is where you discover what sports and exercises you enjoy that often will stay with you for the rest of your life. In the adult world, there is a reason meetings take a break, offices have gyms, adults need to move, so imagine how important it is for kids to move. I challenge anyone to come teach a group of elementary school students for two days, one with PE and the other without. I am confident that you will see the importance of exercise after teaching the day without. We all probably need to move a little bit right now. Now let's think of that for all the students that are sitting in our classrooms day in and day out. Lastly, we cannot rely on outside-of-school supports to supplement the proposed PE cuts. I taught a hamout for five years previously to North Mayanis. Many students there did not have the resources to participate that they have, or I am fortunate enough to teach right now. The OJRC is a great resource. However, their program is all on the eastern side of town, and over eighty percent of their members are from Riverside and Old Greenwich exclusively. On the west side of town, they have the Boys and Girls Club. I cannot speak highly enough about the Boys and Girls Club as I was a former member. Unfortunately, they are under construction and they can't offer their programming right now that they normally do. However, the Greenwich Public Schools, we can guarantee every kid in Greenwich Public Schools gets two hours of high-quality physical education every week. Please make your vote with consideration in every student in Greenwich because for some students, all they're going to get is the hundred and twenty minutes that we organize daily. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Bill Bagardis to be followed by Courtney Galt.
Good evening, Dr. Jones and members of the Greenwich Board of Education. Thank you for allowing me to speak about elementary school physical education tonight. I've been teaching elementary school physical education in Greenwich for twenty-four years. I've been recognized as a Greenwich Public Schools distinguished teacher and represented Greenwich for the Connecticut Teacher of the Year. I've been a learning facilitator, team mentor, local and state workshop and conference presenter, curriculum liaison, and an assistant principal. I would like to explain the reality of what happens during physical education in the elementary schools in our district. Although the aim is a hundred and twenty minutes per week, this almost never happens due to various interruptions. Many classes lose at least one class per week due to holidays, early releases, delayed openings, school-wide assemblies, book fairs, and other school and district events. Additionally, students that participate in band and orchestra are pulled out during PE. At Riverside, we will lose our teaching space over thirty days this year. With that said, many students do not receive the full one hundred and twenty minutes each week. If PE time is reduced, our students would, would actually receive very little quality physical education. Currently included in the hundred and twenty minutes is teaching and assessing the health curriculum, physical education curriculum, and the state physical fitness assessment. PE class is not recess. Our students focus on cooperative learning, movement, movement exploration, fitness, movement concepts, and team sports. Many students do not have access to outside sports and activities, so their PE class is the only opportunity to learn these skills. If PE time is reduced, I believe there will be an increase in behavior problems, boredom, social emotional issues, additional screen time, increase in childhood obesity, mental health issues, and many students struggling to sit still in class to learn. Additionally, we will be eliminating time for classroom teachers to plan lessons, analyze student work, speak with parents, meet with, meet with administrators, and collaborate with colleagues. Greenwich Public Schools sent me to observe Naperville Central High School in Naperville, Illinois, where that was highlighted in the book Spark, written by a Harvard professor. Many students were struggling with English literacy, so they created zero-hour PE. Immediately before English class, the students in the program performed vigorous exercise. These students improved reading comprehension by seventeen percent, while the students not enrolled in the PE class only improved by ten percent. Naperville District scored higher in science test scores than any other school, not just in the state, but in the entire world. The book Spark highlights the scientific evidence of the mind-body connection. Exercise increases cognitive performance, memory, attention, and mood. Exercise promotes happiness, reduces stress, and helps, helps relieve anxiety and depression. Exercise enhances focus and creativity in students. And exercise helps with attention span, learning abilities, social skills, emotional regulation, and overall well-being. One of the stated goals of your proposed cut in PE time is to improve academic test scores. But the evidence suggests less PE time will have the, will have the opposite effect. Thank you, and please remember, seven days without exercise makes one week.
I, I may have to put that above my Stairmaster at home. I like that one. Next up is Courtney Galt, followed by Caitlin Wardell.
Good evening. My name is Courtney Galt. My oldest child attends Riverside School, and I'm a former teacher specializing in early childhood general and special education. After moving to Riverside in 2017, I founded Greenwich Play, which is a company that designs playrooms for families who want to create meaningful play experiences for their children at home. A huge part of what we do is make recommendations to families who are eager, almost desperate, to offer their children more physical play opportunities, not less. At this point, you know that when a child climbs up a rope or throws a ball, they're really working on improving their handwriting grip and overall coordination. It's not just about freeze tag and ghost bowling or any of the other fun activities our incredible teachers facilitate. PE is about problem solving, learning to focus, and testing out how things work. It's about learning independence, enhancing communication skills, and resolving conflicts. It's about learning to work on a team and exercising self-regulation. It's about interacting appropriately with peers and learning to be flexible. It's about acknowledging personal space and building friendships and learning to use different equipment. It's about building confidence. PE is on the chopping block because it's seen as a less essential, it's seen as less essential to academic success, but the evidence and research suggests otherwise, as you already know. As an educational professional, you can see why it's so difficult for me to understand how you could reduce the amount of time our children spend during this critical period. I implore you to reconsider where budget cuts are made and give PE the credit it deserves to remain a vital, constant part of the school day. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Caitlin Wardell to be followed by Karen Kraus. Is Caitlin online, Ms. Wardell?
Yes, hi. I'm Caitlin Wardell. Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Great. Um, I have two students at Riverside. As I wrote to Dr. Jones and the board last month, Riverside has had six ALP ELA teachers in four years. It is not enough to offer programming. GPS must ensure that the programming is being provided by strong and effective teachers. Much of the quote-unquote ALP magic happens because the students have the same teacher over multiple years. Riverside ALP ELA students have been totally short-changed by faculty hiring mistakes. We finally have a strong ELA teacher, and I am concerned that whatever you decide with this budget, our current teacher will be shuffled somewhere else or outright let go due to not having tenure. And why would a talented teacher take less than full-time pay? Let's face it, you get what you pay for and our kids will suffer with that model. I have no confidence, based on historical performance, that Riverside will get a good ELA teacher. I ask that you not fix what is finally not broken. It would be extremely unfortunate to have to rework ALP ELA at Riverside yet again, after so much turmoil and instability. ALP ELA, math, and science this year are very strong programs at Riverside. Dr. Marcus and Mrs. Hancock work well together. Please don't split them up. Together, they make the ALP program at Riverside stronger, especially for the kids in more than one strand, who therefore have less rapport with their GE classroom teachers. And as Dr. Jones knows, since GPS has not been able to provide my daughter and her third-grade classmates with a safe general education classroom experience this year. I ask that you at least provide her and her peers with a stable ALP ELA experience.
Thank you. Next up is Karen Kraus to be followed by Rebecca Cooper.
Good evening. Members of the Board of Education, Dr. Jones. I thank you for the opportunity to share my views with you. And I understand the challenging task before you, and I'm grateful for the time and dedication that you give to our children. My name is Karen Kraus. I'm the mother of a third-grade student at Cos Cob Elementary. She has twenty-four students in her classroom. In the Greenwich Public Schools' regulation governing the Advanced Learning Program, GPS has stated it recognizes its, quote, "responsibility to educate all students to their highest potential." End quote. Fully funding ALP, including the second-grade ALP, is an important part of honoring that commitment. ALP is necessary. We all understand that kids with dyslexia have brains that work differently and require different instruction. It's important to understand that kids in ALP also have brains that work differently. They need to be challenged. They need to go deeper in the material. Socially and emotionally, these kids need ALP too. Including in second grade. A number of the ice, a number of the ALP kids feel isolated in their homeroom because their brains work differently. Some of them get bullied. Some of them act out because they're bored. In ALP, they fit in. They have friends and they learn better because the classes are appropriate for the way their brains work. Greenwich Public Schools understands that special ed students have brains that work differently and need differentiated instruction. And it's budgeted twenty-nine million dollars to address those needs. To address the unique learning needs of kids in ALP, whose brains also work differently, the budget allocates just two-point-seven million. And that's before the proposed cuts, which would bring the out budget down to two-point-three million. I understand the budget pressures, however, ALP is too important to cut. The proposed change is nonsensical. Slashing fifteen percent of out budget to save zero-point-two percent of the overall GPS budget, enforcing teachers to shuttle between multiple schools to make up for one-third of a teacher-per-school reduction is inconsistent with many Board of Education members' promise of efficiency. I urge you to consider alternatives. A slight price increase in the money-losing cafeteria, just for example, there are other options that don't jeopardize learning and the social, emotional, and physical well-being of young kids. And this isn't just about the ALP students. ALP also benefits mainstream students. Pulling ALP students out reduces class size for those subjects and reduces the range of abilities in the class. This gives the homeroom teacher more time to focus on the students who are at grade level. You've committed to educate all students to their highest potential. Now's the time to honor that commitment.
Thank you. You're welcome to send, uh, the rest of your comments to us as well. Uh, so next up is Rebecca Cooper, followed by our last speaker, James Walsh.
Good evening, Dr. Jones, members of the Board of Education. My name is Rebecca Cooper and I am the proud PTA President of Julian Curtis. If I asked all of you, what is your identity? How do you define who you are? What you represent? What you say? Think about it for a minute. Whatever the adjectives, it undoubtedly forms a picture in others' minds as to your values, capabilities, hopes, and dreams. At Julian Curtis, one of the core components of our identity is world language at the inception of education. It is what distinguishes us from the other ten elementary schools. It is what brings together our bifurcated community. It is our pride. From our youngest learners upwards, the early childhood education in the world language sector that Julian Curtis brings to not only our internal community, but to the greater Greenwich Public Schools, is and has been one of distinction and recognition. Do not rob us of our identity. Do not strip our youngest learners of the chance to broaden their cultural and linguistic horizons for the sake of what is a miniscule amount of funding in a multimillion-dollar budget. The repercussions will last for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, our final speaker this evening is James Walsh.
Good evening, folks, and thank you for your time. It seems to me every year around this time, the BET asks you guys, the Board of Ed, to cut their proposed budget. I will ask you, um, to please push back and push back hard against these proposed budget cuts, not just today, but anytime this occurs in the future. Especially the current proposed gym cuts and any other proposed cuts that will directly impact the educational experience of the public school children in Greenwich. It starts with reducing gym and foreign language and moves on to the arts and music and more. It's a slippery slope. To where we arrive in a future where we have whittled down the offerings to a point where we're dis servicing our kids. And will result in a public school system where children in GPS will not have the opportunity for as well-rounded a curriculum or education as their peers in local independent schools and our neighboring public schools. While many may view PE as a nice-to-have, as you've heard tonight, it is a need-to-have for the health and mental well-being of our children. And I understand here at the Board of Ed, you were just focused on the school budget, but again, push back hard against the BET and ask them if the town really does need to cut this small insignificant amount of money from the overall budget, don't do so with our children. It's an amount so small that it will barely be noticed. They should go elsewhere. Um, and find areas to cut it. The BET can find numerous other areas in such a large budget. Instead of cutting the quality of our children's education and setting a precedent for future budget cycles, the BET could keep the proposed Board of Ed budget a hundred percent intact and make cuts elsewhere. They could get creative, cut back on granite curbing and replace it with cheaper asphalt or concrete curbing. They could save money by doing one leaf pickup a year instead of two. There are numerous areas throughout the townwide budget where cuts could be made. Please, as the board here tonight, recognize that and push back hard against the BET and ask them to keep the budget a hundred percent intact. For the public school children in Greenwich, they deserve to have a well-rounded, top-notch offerings along every step of their pre-K to twelve experience while at GPS. They deserve that this year, next year, and every year in the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, and with that, that was our last speaker for our public, uh, portion of our meeting. And I think we will be now moving on to the business portion and our first action item, our, and only action item, um, our budget. So in order to get it on the table, I'd like to make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five operating budget as presented. Do I have a second? Thank you, Cody. All in favor? We're just voting on, on the motion so that we can put it on the table to discuss. No, you need a vote. Oh, that's true. Never mind, just kidding. I, I too have been up since almost four AM. Sorry, thank you. Sorry, just kidding. I thought I could sneak, sneak that one in. Okay, just kidding. All right. Um, I'd also like to turn the mic over to the Budget Chair, Cody, if you want to discuss some of the items, um, there, or if Tony, if you'd like to start the discussion, whichever way.
Yeah, sure. I'm happy to kick it off. So, um. Very interesting listening to all the comments. Uh, I would say that I don't think almost anyone I heard spoke actually understands what the budget process has involved. Um, I don't blame you because I think there's a lot of fake information that's spreading around and I won't dwell on that. But basically what we, first of all, the budget when it comes out is a series of a bunch of assumptions, almost all of which involve spending more money. When we talk about budget cuts, what we're actually doing is modifying a file that's quite difficult to put together and is actually filled with mistakes. Like, we just noticed that there was a mistake in it in the last few days, uh, where we already included HAMAV extended hours. You find things sometimes, you fix them, you discuss them. More importantly, the entire focus of this, and I think some people caught on, isn't about the spending levels. We actually don't really care what the BET guidance is. It also came so late that it wasn't particularly useful for us. What we're doing is we're using the budget discussion as a way to drive policy discussions. So as an example, the, seems like some people are focused on physical education. It's curious because almost all of our schools, we do gym twice a week. I didn't hear anyone in here talk about that we should increase it to three or four times a week. But some of the research that we saw, uh, and that we've been evaluating, um, in the last, uh. Uh, some of the research that started, Tony, that's correct, right? What I just said?
I honestly, we were talking about this today, every building does their own schedule, so they're different across the eleven elementaries.
I spoke to a couple of our, uh, PE teachers and know that some schools do it twice a week at sixty, some do it twice at thirty and once at forty. Uh, you know, every school slightly does it differently based on their scheduling, so it's not, it's not all the same.
Yeah, so, um. The point is that it's just interesting that we are talking about making a minutes change, but, and everyone shows up. No one is coming to us before, or by the way, when we're deliberating on this stuff, uh, it's great to actually get feedback from people. Uh, and get insights and thoughts as we're coming up with solutions. One of the things that we're going to discuss is a modification that would actually push the schools to add more days of gyms through the week. Uh, but we'll get back to that, uh, when we talk about the modifications. Um, what I was going to, so what we're going to do to go through these is we have a few areas, um, that we're going to propose modifications. Uh, some are spending increases, some are spending changes or decreases. Um, I think the way to start might be to pick off what I anticipate are going to be some of the easier ones. And then we can move our way into some of the ones that are probably going to require a higher degree of modification. Does it sound good to the co, my colleagues?
Yeah, and I was also going to say, I don't know if Dr. Jones has anything she wants to say before we move to actually each line item, but yeah. No, Kathleen, you.
Um, I was just going to say, um, Blaze does have the PowerPoint slide to be able to help us walk through so that the audience can see it as well. He's sitting in the back. So maybe we'll.
Hiding.
Can I add to that? Can I just add one thing, Cody, generally?
Yeah, please do.
So, um, while we, while Blaze is coming down here, um, I think we've talked a lot about this. I've mentioned it at a past few meetings and I've mentioned it at the Budget Committee, but I think it's important now that we have a good audience to sort of, sort of take a step back, uh, again on the budget. And, um, John from PTAC did a really good job of sort of framing what I wanted to say. And that is, you know, five-point-six percent of the increase is, is related to contractual, um, obligations. And things like transportation, um, teacher salaries, utilities, special education services, these are things we can't control. And therefore we end up spending a lot of time on the margin, and it's incredibly frustrating. And I think that, like, that was what Cody and I especially have been spending a lot of time in the Budget Committee, really trying to get to the core. And that's where, and I'll give Cody credit there, he's trying to add back in some ways even to the poor people expenditures. Places that we do have discretionary, um, is really where our power is. But, um, you know, busing is over ten million dollars. Um, you know, in order for us to really change busing, you know, kids would have to walk further to school. And that doesn't seem possible at this point when there are kids that already walk like two miles. So things like that are out of our control and it makes it, and I just think it's really important to frame the discussion in that way. I also think, John, what you mentioned with the money that goes back to the town, and I have, keep beating this drum, but I've done the numbers and I'm going to say them to you right now. And everyone, please, reporters, everyone, please hear me loud and clear. If you adjust twenty-twenty-four, which is our actuals, for the money that was returned to the town in the amount of three and a half million dollars, and add in the actuals of the special education interim, which is so fundamentally important to adding to the base, because it is a fundamental change in how we are delivering education, and therefore I have never in all of my life in corporate America, done a percentage increase off a budget when you have actuals that are different. It is like unfathomable, and I just need everyone to please hear that, that you need to use the actuals as your finger, figure for growth. So if you take that, the number is not a hundred and eighty-two million, it's a hundred and eighty million. And then if we talk about all of the reductions we've already made as of our last December fourteenth Board of Ed meeting, which was a reduction of one-point-one million. The move is now a hundred and eighty-point-nine million to a hundred and eighty-nine-point-three, which is a four-point-six percent increase, okay? It is not six-point-five, it's not five-point-three, it is four-point-six percent on actuals to budget. And, you know, I agree, I'm not going to look at the BET guidelines, but that is pretty darn close. So, um, that's where I need to sort of start the conversation, and to me, that means that we are starting tonight at a hundred and eighty-nine-point-three million. And then we can, now I feel like we can continue the discussion.
Actually, just one other good point is that I think we've only been able to cover in like our deep dives, not the entire budget. I don't know what percentage, but Blaze would probably have a view. But we're, we've been kind of going through piece by piece, and there's things like the HAMAV extended day where, like, that we probably want more time on. But the budget process for us is going to continue. It's not going to be, I think, years past. It's a sort of weird thing where everyone focuses on it and then we get through the vote and then no one focuses on it again for ten months. Whereas for us, we're going to continue to go through each of these. Um, there's, we have a, Blaze and I have a long list of, uh, things that we're addressing. Um, and by the way, all of that is because I heard the assertion a few times that there's no inefficiency. And that's just like a, that's a comment from someone who's never actually bothered to spend the time to go through this in detail. Um, there are examples tonight that we'll cover where I think, uh, you're revealing. Um, but the, uh, so the process will continue. We can always make further recommendations to, um, the BET, uh, you know, up or down uh, as we do further evaluations. But I would recommend anyone who's actually curious about this is our Budget Committee meetings go very in-depth on these things. Um, and you'd find that it's, uh, the substance and what we're kind of trying to figure out about what's good for student outcomes is a lot deeper than, you know, kind of, oh, this is correlated with that. Well, that's nice, but okay, how many minutes does that mean, right? PE is great. Should it be one hundred twenty minutes, one hundred forty, one hundred? Those are much more, those are much more difficult questions to answer, and then what are the opportunity costs when you think about where that time is coming from? So just a small example, but, uh, I'd say we've got a long list of deep dives that we're doing so that the twenty-twenty-six budget process will be even more prepared and fun. Uh, and I'm actually looking forward to it. Um, so, uh, I, why don't we just get this kicked off? Um, and, uh, go through these. I was thinking that we'd start with B two, the GHS staffing versus enrollment trend. So maybe I'll make a motion, uh, to adjust the, uh, existing budget. Um, according to line item B two, which is a reduction of four hundred thousand. Does anyone second that? Mike, that's credit for seconding. Um, do you want to have any further discussion on this? We covered this one re, yeah, Kathleen, go ahead.
Yeah, it's, sorry, I'm just pointing Dr. Jones to his B two on the list. Um, this is something that I know that we've debated, um, vigorously, and I would like to sort of say, and it's, it's changed along the way. There was a time when we thought this was a schedule change, um, for the high school. That is not what it is, although that is something that is being considered in terms of valuation. That is not what it is, although that is something that is being considered in terms of valuation, which we can talk about as a board, but that's, that would be a big change going from our block schedule. This is actually efficiencies, but it's, it's not necessarily a reduction in headcount. It might be optimizing classes at the, at the high school. And therefore, sometimes there are classes that run that perhaps aren't, you know, meeting the needs of having a full class, which, it depends on the course, but you know, for, some classes are running at 28, and if some are running at 10, like, we might have to look at the classes that are running at 10. So it really is more of an optimization of the time there, and that's why I'm comfortable with it. So, just to give you a background.
Well, I don't know if it's time for discussion, but I could not possibly be more against this. Well, I'm against a bunch of these items, but, you know, you took some of my discussion points with saying what our budget is based on, but, you know, when we, when I asked Dr. Jones specifically about this reduction, I said, you know, what are the parameters and levers that you're using to make these discussions and to reductions? And it was, yes, optimizing classes, some that might be under-enrolled, and also lower enrollment at the high school. Well, I took a look at that, and I looked at the Prada report, which notes that our enrollment has grown significantly, you know, regularly in the past 10 years. But it's also increased in the past few years, and that next year, it should actually, if you, suggests that next year we'll stay the same as this year. And if you take a look at our own enrollment report, the number of outgoing high schoolers of this graduating class and the supposed incoming classmates from the 8th to 9th grade would have us at 10 more students. So, I'm really concerned at the reduction of FTE there when we don't really know what the classes are going to look like until we have the spring projections of where students are, you know, looking at classes to enroll in. Additionally, the fact is, is that we also have an additional class that we have to offer next year, financial literacy. So we don't really know how that's going to impact things. So, for me, I don't know, we don't know what's going to be undersubscribed. We know we have to offer a new class. We know we may have the same or more students next year. So I just don't understand, especially since we had a reduction of 5.7 FTE last year. There's already two FTE reduction built into the budget we have, so this would be reducing six FTE. And until we really know what's going on at the high school, I, I'm not personally comfortable making this reduction and pigeonholing us and forcing us to find ways to reduce if we don't know that we for sure need it. I see a lot of discussions about improvements for our elementary school programs and new programs, reading things, that programs that we're bringing in, social studies. And I don't see a lot of attention in that same way, per se, at the high school. These kids have less time to get that type of learning in. So, reducing our staff and reducing options for the students there, I don't see how that benefits them. And I know we talked about at some point additionally hiring a consultant to look at the high school schedule. And again, I'm sort of against that. Adding a cost of $50,000 to $85,000 to get that expert in to look at it, when we're looking at cutting things that are, you know, direct impact to our students in the classroom, concerns me. So, I know that's not in our budget right now, but it's just a point.
Any other comments on this one?
I have a comment. I'm just curious, you know, we have a lot of increase in our budget for substitutes, and if we decrease full-time staff, like, would that further exacerbate the problem of needing more substitutes? Like, I, you know, this is something I just thought of today, so I should have sent it earlier, but it hadn't occurred to me. But it seems like I would rather pay for full-time staff who can cover teachers who are out than pay for substitutes.
Yeah, the two are really a very separate issue. You know, we average, I would say, right now, as we're monitoring, we're between anywhere from 80 to 140 teachers that can be out, depending on the day of week, the time of the year, are we having a flu, you know, something with that? And we have, you know, approximately 900-plus teachers. So, yeah, it wouldn't really impact that.
Okay, thanks.
Call the question?
And does anybody else have anything they want to say now? Okay, then I will call the question. All in favor of the reduction of $400,000 for GH staffing? Please raise their hands. Sophie, I don't know, I can't see you from here.
My hands are down.
Okay. All those against? Sophie, your hands up. Okay, so that's 5-3. That motion to reduce passes.
The, for the next, I was thinking we could go to the ALP line item. We have a modification on this in a slide. The background on this is, Blaze, do you want to, I'll just give a little background on it because this one's, do we have? Okay, cool. The, what was interesting about this is an iterative process. We, I think where we started a while ago was a reduction from 2 to 1.7. As we evaluated that, it became clear that that was a really beneficial change from a scheduling standpoint. Everyone seemed to be in favor of it. So we then were looking at if there were any other changes that were worthy of being made. The idea that was put forward was eliminating the Grade 2 enrichment program, which is a program that starts in the second half of the year. We didn't have the support across the Budget Committee for making that change. So then we just said, okay, it's, but there was some feedback that there was concerns and some tepidation about the efficacy of that program. And so then we asked the question, well, is, if we were going to spend $220,000 on anything in ALP, is this the highest and best use of that money? And so, this is where we got an alternative proposal that marginally has some savings, like $10,000. It's not about the savings. It was just where, where the administration thought we could actually spend the money best. And so I'm going to stop there and kick it over to Tony Blaze, just to talk about this line item.
Yeah, we have the graph. If you want to start.
Well, we don't have a motion on the table, and also, I mean, this wasn't, oh, okay. Do we need a motion on the?
Oh, sorry. Let me start by making a motion. Oops. I will make a motion to amend the, the existing budget by a reduction of 10,000. Yeah. For ALP, as related to the ALP program.
And if you don't mind, just because we do have a lot of people online, just to give a little bit of the history very quickly.
We need a second though to put this on the table.
Oh, sorry. Oh, you did, okay. Just as a reminder, I mean, I think it would have been irresponsible for administration to not have this discussion in front of the board because one thing that we talked about all through COVID was anything that was on the COVID ARP grant that was expected to actually not come back all of a sudden in the operating budget. So, we have for decades been funded at 1.7 staffing. That's what's been normal for ALP. It was during COVID when we added an additional 30 minutes, and that was to try to keep grouping smaller, social distancing, all the things we were dealing with. And it was on a COVID grant. That grant expires in August. So, and that's what I think they're showing you actually on the screen. So, in August, when the grant expires, if we want to maintain the 2.0 for the first time, we would need to build that into the operating budget. I built it into the FY '25 budget that was presented to the Board of Education. But I just, I know the ALP parents know that because we did send them an actual direct letter so they could understand why it was being discussed. What we're discussing today, it just kind of went a little bit deeper as we started talking about the second grade program and maintaining the qualification in second grade. But actually, is there a weakness within the program that we felt like, could we use these funds differently while we're having this discussion? And Bonnie was involved, our ALP, the person that operates our ALP program today as well, as we're really talking about where that money could be spent differently, and it would be to enhance primarily the fifth grade program to add another level of mathematics. Because, and Bonnie, I think she is online and could actually speak to this just very shortly. But it's really looking at adding a fourth level, like a tier to the mathematics, which we feel like is missing right now. And Bonnie, I don't know if you are on phone or on screen. We have a lot of people online.
I'm on screen. I'm on screen.
You might go ahead and share, Bonnie, when we talk about that extra tier, what that, what that means?
What it is, is it's focusing in on our underrepresented students and providing them with those extra opportunities to learn and so that they do, so that they do qualify and are ready for the more advanced courses in middle school and high school. You know, I can go into more detail at a later meeting if you wish.
Yeah, I think, go ahead, Blaze. Well, look, Blaze, go ahead.
Yeah, so I think just from a budget perspective, from the Budget Committee, as Cody mentioned, you know, we've been working through kind of systematically, piece by piece. The budget is a reflective document of the policies of the Board, the strategic plan, and then the priorities that we want to implement, where we're actually putting our dollars. So, something we've been doing, I think, really strategically with the Budget Committee has been, you know, as Cody mentioned, not really making just reductions for the sake of making reductions. We're looking at aligning resources with where they follow, either with the strategic plan, that's primarily been our guiding document, to make sure we're investing in the goals of that document, which had a lot of work going to it. So, the conversation evolves. What we built in, in Dr. Jones' budget, we are, you know, correcting major structural elements with the Board of Ed budget. There's huge investments kind of across the board in, you know, really problematic areas like custodial overtime, utilities, the sub-budget, this, the error and kind of our churn rate. That's, you know, we're increasing our salary expenditure just on the churn by more than half a million dollars in this budget. So, some of these other areas have been like a realignment, and we've done this deep dive. ALP has been kind of this natural conversation over months of the committee that's been working on this conversation with ALP, starting with like what Dr. Jones mentioned, where as a notice, we've been very transparent about the positions with ARP that were being built into the operating budget. Almost all of them are special ed, except for the ALP positions and the financial analyst position. Then, you know, so we're going to keep the ALP program because we like the post-COVID model. That's where we ended up. We got to the second grade conversation, and then through conversations with administration and staff, it was kind of like we would realign in the way that Bonnie just described. And so, this is a, what Cody's talking about here with this reduction of $10,000, it's, the budget is a document at the end of the day of a bunch of assumptions. And so, what the goal here would be is to memorialize this, you know, decision in the budget document so that the corresponding program and policy change comes along with it, even though it's a nominal dollar amount and it's only $10,000. This kind of sends the direction that we want to maintain this investment, but we're adopting this budget assumption of $10,000, so it gets memorialized so that we actually reinvest it in a place that the administrators think is more functional.
Let me just make one point, Blaze. If, for whatever reason Bonnie and you all decided that this was actually a mistake and you wanted to undo this, would it be particularly hard to find $10,000 in the budget to undo this?
No.
Okay, great, thanks.
Laura?
So, I'm going to just say I'm thoroughly annoyed that we've had weeks since our last Board of Ed meeting to discuss a change like this. This is the first we're hearing of it at this moment. I think curriculum changes should be evaluated on their own and not part of the budget process. It is the wrong way to be conducting these kinds of evaluations. And at a reduction of $10,000, if you want to make that change, I think you have the resources to do it, but you would have to come to the Board with a curriculum change and a plan and data, and we have none of that. So, I find it really, really annoying, actually.
Well, you actually echoed exactly what I was going to say. This is the first time we're hearing of it. And we have not heard, this wasn't discussed, the Budget Committee, this wasn't discussed in the materials that were posted today. This is the first time I'm hearing of it. I mean, I'm perfectly happy to hear the discussion, but these are full-on programmatic changes. These are not budget discussions, and our budget, the way we want to deliver curriculum and the programs that we want to give and deliver to our students should drive our budget. That is why we were talking about it tying with our strategic plan. But there's clearly a lot of items that are not in our strategic plan that we deliver every day to our students that are significant parts of our academic program. I'm going to use PE as a perfect example of that, which we can get to when we get to that discussion item. But this is a discussion of a complete and utter programmatic change. It shouldn't be happening based on us looking at budgetary numbers. This should have been a robust discussion that we've had in weeks ahead, come, leading up to this, not at the 11th hour.
We can, we can still have all those conversations. Nothing locks us in, right? These are just guidance for the administration.
And I'll just say, this wouldn't be the first time that a programmatic change has come through the budgetary process two years ago. This happened again, where there was programs that were added within the budget to the special education program that were never discussed and that were readily supported by the rest of the Board, and we were only learning about it at the 11th hour. So, this isn't new. It's happened before. And this particular change is really addressing a need that the administration has said would be beneficial, particularly in the math context for fifth graders. So, I, well, we can continue to debate it. You know, the fact that we're all harping on the fact that this is the first time, this is not the first time this has ever happened before, and everyone has accepted these changes as they've come for budgetary items.
I'd just like to, A, I'm not exactly sure what special ed stuff that was thrown in at the 11th hour, but I'm happy to talk to you about it. But if you're telling me that this is something about fifth grade math, it seems that some board members have had an opportunity to hear what this is, and others have not, which is also a little concerning before we're hearing it in the meeting. Cody?
Yeah, I would just, I would just make the point that, and Tony, correct me if I'm wrong, but if this, if, if you had been aware of this idea when you put the original budget together, it just would have been embedded in the budget, and we never would have been discussing it at all. So this is actually an improved, I think, it's fair to say that this is an improvement in terms of transparency because the budget contains hundreds of assumptions that impact policy. And I think with your urging, you said, because it's $10,000, you guys could easily make the adjustment without bringing it up. You actually wanted to bring it forward just to make sure we could actually start the discussion. We can continue the discussion. As Blaze said, we can undo it. But I think in a lot of ways, this vote is basically a recognition that this is, we're supportive of a change that you and Bonnie flagged that if you had had a few months ago, we would have never even been talking about it. Is that a fair assessment?
It's a fair assessment in adding the level. Changing the second grade piece would have come to the Board. Yeah.
But it would have come as part of the entire budget package.
That's correct.
Right.
I have a question. So, is this fifth grade math expansion across the entire district? Or is it just specific schools?
And Bonnie, feel free to chime in, but my understanding is it's where it's needed because it's based on the enrollment and where students are at the time, whether or not you need that level or not.
Can we hear what the actual discussion is? Because like, I have no idea what the proposal is. Clearly, some people have heard this and some have not, which is really concerning. So if you want to present it so that we all know what we're talking about here? Because it's not just a change to second grade. Is that what you're saying?
No, what it is, what the discussion has been is if you had the same amount of money, is there a way that we would actually enhance the ALP program to be even better versus just saying, okay, we're going to reduce money because we know we had a grant, now we don't have the grant? That's, that's really been the discussion, and, you know, I think Bonnie has done a lot of research just in how our kids are performing in math, you know, how many students are in zero hour when they go from 8th to 9th, all of those sorts of discussions. And I know, Bonnie, you mentioned, when we were discussing it, even Fairfax County, who is known to have, I believe, one of the most robust gifted programs in the country. They're also one of the largest school districts in the country, but they have a four-tier system. And in the four-tier means that you're, you're taking kids who might be at a Level 3 instead of a Level 4, but the reason they're still sitting at a Level 3 is because maybe they haven't had the same opportunity for private tutors to take the courses in the summer. And it's really evaluating the data based on where kids are, and that. And it's really evaluating the data based on where kids are. And that's, Bonnie, and feel free to expand on that. This is your expertise area.
Yes, we've talked about this as a board many, many times when we talk about the diversity within our in, within our higher level courses. And when I was asked the question, if you could reallocate that, that money, the first thing I thought of was, we really need to be looking at another level of a tier for those students who are, have high potential but are not yet achieving at the levels that they are, that they are capable of doing, because they don't have those opportunities to learn. And so when, or it's not the opportunities learned, but they've not had the opportunities outside of the school day that other students have had. When we look at our zero-hour students, we have very few students from certain parts of town, certain, certain feeder schools. And what we want to do is look at, well, where is that? What, you know, why is that, that we don't have more diversity within certain programs within our highest level courses? And what is it that we can do about that?
Oh, Kathleen, you can go first. No, no, you can go.
So again, I feel the need to take a step back on the advanced learning program. As hopefully everyone knows by now, I think that there's no doubt that I am probably the biggest advocate of the advanced learning program on the board. And that, and that's why every time this comes in front of me, I am sort of unwilling to move. Because this is the program that is, you know, just remind everyone, you are mandated as a state to identify gifted children, but you are not mandated to provide it a program. And to me, that is where Greenwich has really distinguished themselves as a district, because we do sort of focus on our advanced learners and I think it's invaluable. And when I look at the America Rescue Plan, and I'm happy you brought that up, because what we learned from COVID was this move from 1.7 to 2.0 wasn't in fact an addition. But it was wonderful for the elementary school program to actually then have a reading and writing block and a STEM block separately. And so I think that that needs to be clear, because that was something that I know was tried to, you know, this, this sort of went two-two on the Budget Committee. And so I think it's important that everyone recognizes that we've been fighting hard here to even keep that. Now that that seems to be off the table, and I'm really happy to hear that, we are now talking about second grade and the identification process. And I need to hear a lot more, because I truly think that gifted can be identified in second grade. And I know that I've been lucky enough to have that experience and those children's needs need to be addressed early. And I've seen it especially in math, and I'm looking at Mr. Reed as I say this. And I just, I am weary of making that change. I'd like to also add the fifth grade thing. I don't want to see this as a zero-sum game. I'm happy to do both. But as a result, I cannot make any change as it relates to the advanced learning program in front of me this evening.
Again, we still haven't had whatever the proposal might be, so I'm not sure what you're discussing with fifth grade. The only thing we had heard about was a reduction for the second grade program. But I will say, I have said this at, I can go back and count the number of Board of Education meetings where we have discussed ALP, that I have said the same thing. What we truly need to have is, as this board, is a discussion on the true purpose of the ALP program. We have talked constantly about the purpose of, of this program, whether or not it's to make sure that we have a balance of boys and girls or, or different types of students, or if it's, is this program truly to meet the needs of those who need a deeper, a faster curriculum and a deeper curriculum at a younger age, to then allow the students in, in traditional classrooms also who catch up. And then when they get to the middle school, those students are then given the opportunity again, whether you were an ALP or not, to meet those advanced level courses. And then those students, again, are given the same opportunity throughout middle school and once they get to high school, to go to the advanced level courses and to honors and AP. So I take this back to, I really want to hear what the proposal is, because I've heard nothing. But I think the board truly needs to have a discussion outside of budget as to what we believe the purpose of ALP is. I am an exceptionally strong supporter of it, but it needs to be done and done in a proper way.
I just want to state that this has, this is like the third iteration of the ALP odyssey in this budget process, because first we heard it was ALP science, then it was the second grade, and now we're doing something with the fifth grade. And I, I mean, I think that we should withdraw this motion, honestly.
You just, I think to, to clear up some of the confusion, I think we will end up withdrawing it because of Kathleen's comments, but the idea here is you'd have two choices with something like, you have three choices with the second grade program. You can say, we're going to pull back on the program. By the way, the background here is that this is this government money that we were never supposed to continue forever, whatever. But you can say, we're gonna pull back on that program and that money is just, isn't spent anywhere. You can say, we're going to keep the program as it is. Or what this proposal is, is we're going to pull back on the program, but we're going to keep all of that money in ALP. And so the idea with that, and the reason we got there through these iterations, was saying, okay, we're spending money here, but do we, do the people responsible for spending it think this is the very best place to spend it? And the answer we got back was, no. And so then the, the natural place we went to was, okay, let's make it clear from, because for planning, they need to have all this, you know, ironed out. Let's make it clear that we're not going to have second grade, but that money's not leaving the ALP program. And it can flow to wherever, you know, the administration thinks is best. And the tentative place to flow it to was this fifth grade program, but as Blaze said, we could change it. Now, we can still, as I said, the budgeting process will be ongoing. I thought we had, the Budget Committee agreed on this, but if we need more time on that, that's fine. We can continue to work on that.
Yeah, this wasn't mentioned at all at the Budget Committee.
Well, the Budget Committee talks also sometimes, so you're not on the Budget Committee.
I, I understand that, but you have to have those discussions in a public meeting.
You can have caucus, caucus conversations without that.
Oh, so I think, I, I, I think we've plowed this field, because I don't think the votes are here, so I don't know if we want to continue this for, for that long. I will say, though, I do think for purposes of the history and things and whatnot, I, I disagree, Laura, because I do think that the different iterations here have been helpful, because the original proposal, we got pushed back. There was a significant pushback from administration, rightly so, saying, you know what? That writing block was really helpful. We really needed that writing block. We also heard from administration saying, you know what's maybe not quite as helpful is second grade, because that's not following the same model. It's not acceleration, it's enrichment, and we might actually be losing some students. Students might actually be losing some content there, the, which started this whole second grade thing. Now, we want to talk about more. I hear from other board members that we want to talk about, talk about that more, and we're not ready to vote on that. I think that's fine. However, I do think, and tell me if I'm wrong, because I don't want to put words in any of our administrators mouth here, but I think what we're hearing from district leadership is that the reality that another layer in fifth grade would be much better for ALP outcomes than second grade.
Again, the full board has not heard that proposal. This is the first time.
You cannot be, you should not be interrupting me. You are out of order. It's inappropriate. You should not interrupt me. It's inappropriate. I have the floor. Please do not interrupt me. You can, you're welcome to come after I finish. Now, as I was saying, the, if that's not the case, I don't want to put any words in my mouth, but I do, it does sound like that's what we're, what, what we're hearing from administration. Now, I'm perfectly fine, Karen, if we need to talk more about that. I think it's fine, like I said. But I do think it is worth going back, because I think that's what we're hearing. But tell me if I'm wrong.
So.
Sorry, Karen hasn't spoken yet.
I, I, I think the issue here is, and what I'm hearing, and, and I do agree that the, we should take the motion off the table, because it's not ripe for a vote. But what I'm hearing is that there is, within the ALP program, some possible revamping that the administration has been talking about. And I think it's important that we do understand what it is that the administration is proposing in detail, and more specifically on the detail of what we're taking, what would be taken away from second grade and what this math proponent would look like for fifth grade, and where, where we want to spend that money. So I know that from a planning perspective, in February, we're having a couple of things being presented on the lines of academic achievement and special ed achievement and growth in those students. I think what would be helpful for February, since we seem to be turning that meeting into a much-needed academic forum, is to also hear what this plan and proposal would be for how we want to revamp the ALP program. And I think from soup to nuts, we should hear what wants to, what we want to do with the money that is currently in the next year's budget.
That's what I was saying. We want to hear the proposal, but yeah. Laura?
So I just fundamentally, curriculum changes come to the board. While I appreciate the thought and the intent of giving the district and the administrators flexibility to augment as they may need, we are the ones who are supposed to give the district the direction. So we are responsible for evaluating changes to ALP. We can't just make that as a, you know, it's $10,000 is negligible. We're all, I think, in agreement on that. It's the fundamental authority of the board to oversee the district and provide the direction to them. It's a partnership, but I don't feel like we've had that partnership. We did not discuss this proposal in the Budget Committee. So I, I don't really have anything else to add, other than I, I do think we should certainly speak about it when we are having our curriculum discussions. And, and that's the proper place for this discussion to occur.
Of course.
I think I screwed up by overly focusing on what the potential replacement would be. Just the key idea here, on your point of giving instruction, is because we, we did look at the second grade issue, I think, pretty extensively. And the takeaway was, one, we didn't want to do any reduction in funding to ALP, right, or to ALP. So then the question was, but we also didn't feel strongly about second grade. To me, passing this is just an instruction not to implement a specific fifth grade program, but to say, here you go, here's 200, $10,000 that you can freely, the second grade program is gone. You can freely allocate 200, $10,000 to wherever you want. Come back to us and propose where you want to allocate that. So that actually would be the instruction to come up with a proposal. And oh, by the way, if you guys actually think that the second grade program is the best place to redeploy that, no problem, we'll fix it. That was the whole idea behind this. So it was really an instruction to go come up with a proposal and bring it back to us. If we don't want to give the administration that instruction, and we want to say for 2025, don't explore a replacement and keep the second grade program as it is, then I think that's what we'd be doing by not voting for this. But I, I made a mistake by making it seem like the replacement was the reason we're doing it. That's, I, I tried to get back on track when I said, hey, can we go back to the other way if you decide? But it's really about saying we're giving you a, a blank canvas to work off of, to come back and propose something. And all the instruction is, is propose something to us, because what, what we think we've heard is there's better uses for this money.
Which leads me back to, I'd love to hear the proposal.
Then, then you should vote for it, right? Because the whole.
I don't want to vote for it until I've heard what it is. And we also, it's, it's very difficult to discuss something 11th hour. The reason we didn't want to vote on the budget before the end of last year, we're doing this tonight, is because we were proposing things in the late December meeting that the public had not heard before, it had not an opportunity to opine on. That's the same thing. I really would love to hear the proposal. It could be the most incredible thing ever and that we all want to do. I just, I just don't know what it is. That's all I'm saying. We could fully support it. We just don't know what it is, or at least not all of us.
Can I ask another question? Is Bonnie still on the line? She said something that struck me. So you said that it's, it, it just sounds to me like you're you're proposing merit-based over.
No.
Not based on DEI principles.
It's already merit-based.
No, she said sir, for underserved children.
What I'm looking at is when, my understanding is, the question that I was asked is, if you were looking at having, keeping the staffing the same, which is what I thought was on the table, but could you reallocate that money towards, what else would you do? And when we're looking at that, it would be focusing in on our underrepresented students and looking at those, those types of programs, like what Fairfax has, where they have a four-tier system, and where we do not have a tier system where, right now, we live, we have a dichotomous system. Either you're in ALP or you're not, or you're in the classroom. And what we want to do when we're looking at this is looking at that tier that's between the, between a classroom and an ALP accelerated program. And focusing in on those underrepresented populations especially.
Bonnie, I don't know if you can see, but Mark set the mic as well and wanted to add.
I just want to, I just want to clarify, because this, again, as other people have stated, this is the first time I've heard any of it as well for tonight. I thought we were talking about second grade science. So, thank you for clarifying.
So if I could just add my two cents, the, the first time this theoretical was brought to my attention was 2:00 PM today. So there were no conversations, and there was no, there were no recommendations that came out of my department with my team. And so what, what I would like us all to do is take a step back and realize what Mr. Kittle is saying is he's just presenting a hypothetical to us to explore potential options. I think it's a little premature for Bonnie to be speaking about what we could do. And so I would ask that we not go down that road any further, because we haven't had internal thoughtful conversations about what we could potentially do better to service the, that particular population. The opportunity is being presented to us through, through the Budget Committee, and I appreciate the, the opportunity. But I don't want to present anything that hasn't been well thought out, or that comes from my department. And so this isn't a recommendation from my department. But if you authorize us to explore it, we'd be happy to do that. So I just want to clarify for everyone who's listening tonight and, and to the board.
I mean, I can't speak for anybody else. I'll, I'll let Cody.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Again, I screwed up the messaging on this at the beginning, but the whole point of this was a middle ground of saying, well, some of us think that the second grade program should be cut, some of us don't. But the overarching theme was people thought the ALP program was very important. And the, the, the question was, well, i- i- is an interesting path to explore here to just give the administration the opening to come back and present on what, a change to make. And the nominal vote is, like, the dollar amount, again, is insignificant. The idea was the vote would really be just authorizing them to, like, Mark and your team, which if we didn't take the vote, I don't think it was on your agenda of something to go say, hey, is there a place we want to, you know, how would we think about spending this money? And, and so that was the whole idea was, and I think that's something that you actually were interested in taking on, right? Yeah, so blame me for the messaging on the, the opening here. But that, like, I think that's not, shouldn't be as controversial of a thing as I probably made it sound in the beginning of just giving, giving Mark's team instructions to see, okay, here's, here's Bonnie, do you want to go back to where we were with the second grade program, or do you want to do something different? I think it's more reasonable than maybe it got the, you know, and that, that's on me.
I, I'll just say, this could be the, the best idea. That's why I said I, I'm perfectly happy to hear it. But if, you know, Mr. D'Amico is saying that, that he has embedded this, it came to him late today. This isn't really the best forum to have it. It's not something that we typically have presented. And if it's a big, you know, possible programmatic change, it doesn't typically come through to us as a budget line item, which is what it is. And so I, I think, I, I really just, I want to hear about it, but if you're not ready to present it, you want something, I, I would love to add this to an agenda coming up. I, I, I'm not saying I'm not in support. I just don't know what it is.
But I just, I, when you say that, it makes me realize that I'm still not being clear. It's, we're not pushing through any policy. Sorry, does the peanut gallery have something they want to? The point isn't to make a specific policy proposal. The point is to give guidance to the administration that they are free to think about if they want to reallocate those. to reallocate those funds somewhere. That's the only, and it's something, by the way, that they're asking for. So the question is, do we want to give them that? Just, just the, just the invitation to present something alternative. Their presentation may be, we don't want to change anything. That's it.
I think that this requires more discussion. And I think it would just be wise if we add it to the agenda, withdraw the motion, or we could take the vote. But I sent you, you're reading the room here. And it's. Yeah, just remake. So.
Yeah, that's fine. We'll withdraw the motion.
Okay. I think we don't necessarily have agenda planning on this docket today, but I think we should discuss when we might want to, to give direction to the staff if we want to hear about it. I would love to have that opportunity.
We just missed the opportunity, but.
I beg to differ, but that's okay. Dr. Jones?
Yeah. And just to clarify, because the, the ALP, as it stands during COVID, is what has been built into the FY '25 budget. So if we don't, if we just pass the budget as is, it's still in there. How it looked in COVID, it's now in the operating budget.
So let's do world language, because I think that will be shorter. We'll see. I think the idea here is we're probably going to not make a motion on this, or, no, sorry, I'll make the motion so we can discuss it and then we'll, I'll make a motion to amend the existing budget according to the B3 change of negative, or $100,000 reduction related to JC World Language.
You want to have a discussion? So what you discussed with the Budget Committee?
Yeah, yeah. So I think the thing that we're very focused on here is Julian Curtis is unique. And actually, maybe I'll kick it over to Mike, but in some of the struggles that it's had in terms of academic performance, and there was no objection at all. It's just been very interesting to me to see the way that communities responded, because we made this change at HAMAV with no issue, supportive of the principal. In the two schools are in a very similar situation. And again, the idea here was, if we're struggling a lot in some of the basics, then should we reallocate resources towards those basics? It's not a budget change, it's a policy change. And, but Mike, do you want to just give, I think it's worth, what I was going to say is, we're going, I think we're going to end up withdrawing this. We're going to continue to evaluate it as part of the ongoing budget process, but maybe I don't want to get ahead of myself. Mike, do you want to? Yeah, yeah. Okay. Mike, go for it.
Okay, Karen. Okay. They, so I understand the, the passion about this. I think the, we had several speakers tonight speak to the Julian Curtis' identity as a magnet school and a world language school. They, what, as we've been talking about this now for, for the better part of six weeks, what we keep going back to, and what I keep going back to is the achievement numbers. What we have here is we have a program that's an outlier in that it is not at every school. In fact, it is not at most schools. The, it's at our international schools. The, and it's at Julian Curtis, and it was at HAMAV. The, it was in K2 in many of our other schools. Because it's at JC, you have instructional time of up to 80 minutes in second grade. The missing from core instruction devoted to world language. What you see here consistently in the data is JC tracking in the, in the opposite direction. And it's concerning, and it's concerning from a strategic plan perspective, and it's concerning from obviously our, our core mission. You don't, I don't want to go into too much of the data specifics. It's all available online and it's fully vetted from the, by the administration. But we don't have, it's, it's less, the less concern is less that the achievement scores here are below other schools in town. Some of, in some, in some areas, they are. They, but the concern is that they are also consistently tracking at every grade level and every subject in the wrong direction. Last year, post-COVID, after, not, this is not, it's not a COVID thing. This is compared to other schools. So looking at that from a board perspective and from a governance perspective, I don't see how, I think it makes a lot of sense for us to take the administration's recommendation here and remove in K2 a program that does not exist at our other elementary schools, where we see achievement numbers going in the right direction and returning that time in K2 for core instruction, while similarly challenging the district to rethink how we can make sure that the magnet theme isn't lost. The, we still have French, it's still, JC is still differentiated that way. In K2, I have little doubt that there are other ways we can figure out ways through afters or other ways, creative ways to come back and have a conversation about how to make sure we can control that and keep that character and that, what makes that school unique. But as a board, our primary responsibility must be to consider all our programming in light of data and student performance. And the data here is unfortunately very clear. And I, unfortunately, I haven't heard any arguments over the last six weeks. I've heard a lot of people say how word language improves cognitive development, things like that. But I haven't heard any arguments as to why we feel the scores will be going in the right direction this year without that increased instructional time. And 80 minutes is a lot of time. So, so, so that's why I think, I believe very strongly in this, in this proposal. And I think it's the right thing to do from a, from a, from a governance perspective.
Just a, just a note of clarification. Prior to us discussing Hamilton Avenue, there were four schools in our district that have FLEX at K2. We have two also that have it as part of their requirements for IB. So, you know, well, I thought you only mentioned these two. So I was just going to point that out. So. Laura?
So again, this is another programmatic change via the budget. And I've not, I'm not in favor of it. The school improvement plan for JC is posted online. I read it. It's aligned with the strategic plan. If the principal feels that they need to reduce the instructional time, that they devote to foreign language, maybe that's another discussion. If we think 80 minutes is too much, but, you know, 60 is better, I, I mean, that's another discussion. But I'm not going to strip the funds to allow them to continue their magnet theme. If we want to discuss instructional time versus their school improvement plan and the strategic plan, I think that's well and good. But I am not in favor of the reduction. I think when I looked at their strategic, their school improvement plan, I was satisfied. And there needs to be a few more tools in the toolbox to improve our, our test scores than just changing a magnet theme via the budget, you know, $100,000 line item. I just don't feel good about that. So.
Kathleen?
So in the Budget Committee, I abstained on this vote because I wanted to learn more. And therefore, by doing that, it came to you guys. But in my learning more, I think I really need to, I heard from this community loud and clear. And I heard from the staff there, and that's where I differentiated from Hamilton Avenue a bit. Hamilton Avenue, there seemed to be no feedback. It seemed that people were very comfortable with that change. And with JC, we heard just the opposite. And, you know, when, when people come out in force like that, I really feel like I need to hear them and listen to them. Now, I'm not saying that this shouldn't be analyzed down the road. Is this the right magnet program for this school? Sure. I'm always open to those discussions because you need to always be thinking, always be innovating. And the answer might be yes. But it, it might be, you know, it should be a STEM school. I don't know. But I'm just throwing it out there. But as, as it stands today, I can't, in good conscience, vote for this.
Does anybody else have anything to say? Okay. I'll just reiterate that I, I will say the same as Kathleen. I, I'm not sure whether it's the best use of time in those classrooms, but I think it's definitely something we should take a deeper dive into going forward. And if it's something that the principal feels what she would like to remain, and we've heard from countless members of our community, I think, as, at the time this board meeting started, I had over 560 plus emails from the community. A large majority of that focused on, on this discussion item. So, so, well, I won't say a majority, it was mostly P. But anyway, so I don't know if you want to call the question.
Oh, no, I don't think we want to. I think we want to withdraw the motion.
Okay. So you're withdrawing this motion?
As we thought we would. Okay. I think we've got two left. Yeah, because HAMAV will, I guess we can talk, we'll make, we'll do HAMAV too, but I don't think.
You did HAMAV in the last meeting.
We voted on that. We, we.
No, 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 not the language one. I'm talking about the new topic C2.
Yeah, you should go on the.
No, yeah. So we'll do the phys, physical education one. So I'll make a motion to change the realignment of instructional minutes, or to do, sorry, change the existing budget according to B1, which is realignment of instructional minutes. But I'm going to make the motion for a $200,000 reduction versus a $400,000 reduction. Do you want me to talk a little bit more?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
We need a second. Sorry, second. Anyone to put this on the table?
I can second it. Put it on the table.
So this one's been very interesting, because we obviously got a lot of emails that said that phys ed is associated with learning, which seems very true. Didn't really help us determine what the optimal amount of time is, whether we should be increasing it or decreasing it. One thing that did stand out was that it seemed like, and I think, I want to speak for everyone, but the more research I did on it, it seemed like there was a benefit for having more days or the potential for more days. And there's some scheduling challenges associated with implementing that. But one of the things that we talked about in terms of improving this idea, because I think, remember, we're starting from a standpoint where we're well in excess of all of our peers, which isn't definitive, but it's just something to look at. And then we started saying, okay, well, is, is it the right way? And I think the key thing for everyone to think about is, especially the schools where there are two one-hour blocks. So I know, I don't know all the schools, obviously, as I mentioned before, but like Cos Cob, I know is a school where there's, I think we had someone from Cos Cob, where it's two one-hour blocks. And so you say, okay, is, what is the return on that 41st minute of gym class versus an incremental minute of something else? Whether that's recess, one of the speakers talked about some of the neighboring school districts having higher recess times or some other use of time. I think that's the key question, is you're looking at what the marginal benefit of a marginal minute is in hour-long block, which is a lot different than saying, oh, no, you know, the first minute, which it seems is very high reward. Someone mentioned earlier the zero hour PE experiment. Those, those are 30 to 45 minute blocks that they use. And so, and actually, some of our schools use 30-minute PE blocks right now. So one of the kind of interesting ideas that we had on this that I think, I'm actually, Kathleen, do you want to, would you mind if I kicked over? Because I'm pretty sure everyone's sick of hearing me talk. But the, we had an idea to change this one, which is why the, the budget's modified. But do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, I'm doing my best. So I, I think that we're more broadly want to look at physical education, right? And I think the one thing that this board agreed on is when we look at it at the high school perspective, there is frustration with students who are, you know, working out because they're JV or varsity athletes and are spending three to four hours after school participating in physical education and then, you know, can't take another class or anything like that, or have a free block frankly during the day. And what we came to realize is that was based on state law, right? And so we, we've talked about that and we all just sort of said, well, that, that's not to be. But I give credit to my colleague, Sophie, who sort of said, well, we're going for a reading waiver. You know, why can't we do sort of the same thing with the state as it relates to physical education at the high school? And therefore, I'm going to try to, I guess I can amend the motion, or maybe she withdraw it. I'm going to try to usher a motion that, and Cody, that's why I think when you kind of came up with the 200,000 number, that's a lot more achievable than, than the 400,000, if we sort of direct the administration to think more broadly about how to address physical education at the district level. So do you want to withdraw it? And I'm going to do my best to kind of come up with a motion that sort of more broadly addresses the district?
Yeah, sure. I'll withdraw the motion.
And, and this is, I just wrote it. So everyone feel free to modify it, because this might be less than perfect. But I'd like to make a motion for realignment of physical education across the district to optimize from GHS to the elementary schools with the caveat, with the following points. Greenwich High School opt out of physical education when the student meets, meets their physical education requirements through after-school sports through a waiver achieved by the state. And/or elementary school optimized time allocation so that recess and PE meet, PE, physical education meets our vision of the graduate, which includes three days per week as a minimum.
I hope you can send that to me because I.
It's less than perfect, but yes.
So do you want to just repeat it? Because I don't know if anybody else followed before we get a second.
Yeah. And feel free, again, if someone has anything better, I am really happy to withdraw.
I have one modification for that. But I'll second it first, right? And then we can talk about it.
Do, can you repeat it?
Realignment of physical education across the district to optimize from Greenwich High School through elementary schools as follows. Greenwich High School opt out of physical education when the student meets the physical education needs through after-school sports as addressed through a state waiver. And/or elementary school optimizes time allocation so that recess and PE meets our vision of the graduate, which includes three days per week as a minimum.
I'll second that.
I would like to amend it. I think the high school and the, and the lower grades, if you want high school athletes to get a waiver, great. But I think that that is wholly separate from our budget discussion of instructional minutes for PE. Especially in the lower grades. I mean, I think you have to make two motions.
I was going to do, the feedback I was going to offer was that I think one, we need to have a dollar amount, which was, I would still advise using the 200,000 change. The other comment I'd make is, I think the three days, and Tony should weigh in on this, three days require some logistical effort. And so what I would recommend is cutting it to 80 minutes for schools that stay on two days. So that if a school is staying with two days, that the 60 minutes goes to 40. But if they go to three days, that they can have the, you know, I was going to say 100 minutes, but, you know, this is a good, good discussion item. They would have extra time.
Are you modifying the motion?
Well, we're still in discussion on this motion. So I was just offering thoughts on.
We have to put the motion, somebody has to second it, put the motion on the table to even discuss.
I seconded the motion.
You did?
Yeah, yeah.
So are you discussing a modification of the motion?
I.
I thought you said you wanted to discuss it before you seconded it. That's what I was asking. Okay.
Oh, yeah. No, I did second it. And Laura talked after I seconded it, and then I'm talking.
Well, that's sort of a modification. Like, I think the high school athlete waiver thing should be completely separate.
Cody wants to, did you want to finish, Cody?
Yeah, just, I think the idea of the high school, again, a lot of what we're doing here is a signaling aspect to the administration. So if we say, hey, like, it's just a way to encourage exploring, dealing with the state. I think there's obviously a lot of obstacles there. A lot of them are driven by teachers' unions and really silly rules from Hartford. But it's something that's worth giving the encouragement to explore. But my, my other comment on it is just to say that if, if a school is sticking with two days, that they should go to 80 minutes, but we didn't. that they should go to 80 minutes, but we didn't encourage them to go to three days.
Again, this is something that's coming to us at the nth hour, and I know that that makes it really difficult. I'm with Laura. I would love to explore the idea of if we could submit a waiver for the high school, but that has nothing to do with budget. And I think that we should discuss that at a meeting because I think it's actually something we've talked about for years. But if you're talking about a reduction of the budget for FTE or, excuse me, a realignment of instructional minutes for PE and instead of 400 as 200K, I'm not really sure what that looks like. And I think what I've heard is that from PEA's, PE's, they'd like to have a more consistent schedule from all 11 elementary schools across the district, which I know when you have two schools with 60 minutes and one school with 30, 30, and 40, or two with, it makes it a little more difficult and they want to make it more consistent, which, you know, I'm not sure if a reduction of 200,000 will do or not. I have a whole lot of discussion points, but I know that that's something they'd like to do instead of offering an option to make it more disparate between different schools. I think we should be looking at to make it similar.
Just, the, I think the idea is that the budget assumption is that there are some schools that will not change from two days a week. And in those schools, very little is lost by going from 60 minutes to 40 minutes. But if, but we're not assuming the same amount of savings you would get from going to 80 minutes because we're actually allowing for schools to go to three days, which would, you know, which offsets some of the savings. So it's basically, our finding was more frequent gym class makes sense. And how do we incentivize principals to adjust their schedules? Which isn't easy and is probably not something that we want to mandate. We may want to put a carrot out there and say, okay, you're able to make this change if you want. If you're not able to make it, then we would prefer to allocate the back 20 minutes of each of those gym periods to instructional time or to recess.
Sophie has her hand up.
Yeah, so Cody, you asked what was the optimal amount of PE time? And I did find that National Institute of Health says that it's 150 minutes. So we are, 120 is a good number compared to our peers, but they say 150 minutes is what's optimal for elementary.
Thank you guys. Thanks, all right.
So do you want to make a motion to increase our?
No, I don't want to, but I think, actually, what I think was, and I've done a lot of research on this and intervening ways, like I agree with you. I think having PE more frequently would really benefit our kids. And I think there's an opportunity to maybe do, you know, the 150 comes from saying 30 minutes of PE every day is kind of the optimal for the kids because they're getting exercise, they're getting a mental break, they're, you know, all of the positive things that other people have spoken about, someone I could repeat them. But I'm not saying we need to go to 150, but I think what I would like to explore is keeping it 120 and saying, let's try and have all the schools go to three 40-minute blocks and see what that looks like. I mean, if we, if we're talking about data, we need to have some, you know, that would be some data to look at. Change that the PE schedule and see what the test scores look like in a year or two.
So you're okay with a 40-minute gym block?
I'm totally fine with a 40-minute gym block, but I don't want to decrease the number of overall minutes. But I think three 40-minute blocks would be great. And I think that would probably work better for a lot of the PE teachers and for the kids, especially because some of the kids get pulled out for specials and whatnot. And the more times you're offering gym, the more likely they are to actually be able to go to gym, even though they get pulled out for band or extra help or whatever they're getting pulled out for. So I prefer that schedule and I think that's something worth looking at.
Kathleen? One other idea. So I hate being extremely prescriptive, just as a, generally as a board. I think it's sort of, that's not the role of a board, that's the role of administration, right? Board is supposed to be more philosophical. So when I'm starting to go down to, I'd like you to do 30 minutes here and 30 minutes there, it's like, now am I going to start telling you I want to teach music and art too? So I don't love that. And that's why I was trying to come with an overarching motion. And therefore, I might change it again. But that's why I was trying to say, like, realignment of physical education across the district to optimize what's best for our students as laid out in the vision of the graduate. And perhaps I should have full stopped there and then said, and with a reduction of 200,000, because I actually think you're going to get that with the waiver at the high school. Period, the end. And that's why then I feel like these were other good thoughts to have. And I do think that in some ways, we're going to perhaps reimagine elementary. I mean, I actually just texted my middle school girls. What do you guys have for gym? Because I, one just left in elementary school, so I knew exactly what you had there. But, you know, they're two to three days a week, right? And it's 45 minutes. So it's all over the place. So I just feel, and I'm sure there's developmental reasons for all that, but that's not for me to prescribe. And that's why I was trying to come up with a broader motion. But I'm not, okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, if I could just speak to the waiver, there is not a waiver process for the high school like for PE. It doesn't exist. The reason we have a reading waiver that was submitted is because the legislature passed law that basically set up that they were going to have to look at science of reading and what we were doing. And then in working with the Connecticut State Department of Ed, they've put in this waiver process to see if what we're doing meets it or not. Right now, it is not within the law for us to actually say that your athletics can count for PE. Now, it doesn't mean we can't continue to explore, we've explored it before. But what it would mean is you would need to look at your coaches that are at the high school, who are also certified PE teachers, and are they meeting the standards of expectation for actually the requirements for the state for PE and what they're doing as part of their athletics? There are states that are different than Connecticut. Happens all the time. Athletics is actually on your daily schedule, but in Connecticut, it's not that way. So we would have some work to do, but I just want to be really clear. There's, they don't normally have a waiver process and we just go and ask for them to let us do what we want.
Well, I'll let others speak. I was going to point out that it is a graduation requirement that we have one credit for PE and one for sports, other sports. I can look it up exactly, but it is a graduation requirement. Health, yeah, thank you. Karen and then Cody?
Sure, I'm just, I'm a little confused as to why we would add this whole waiver portion into the motion process here. Because one, this is the first time, we're talking about a lot of first times today, but this is the first time I'm hearing about the waiver portion. And now that Dr. Jones has confirmed there is no such thing, I just don't think we could, why there's any point in adding that. I think the issue here was trying to find some type of savings within the budget for, and one way in which to do that was to revamp the elementary process. So I think we need to simplify and be more direct as to what we're intending to do, which is if we are reducing it by 400,000 or attempting to reduce it by 200,000, just simply make a motion that says we are reducing, sorry, I need glasses, for the realignment of instruction minutes and physical education, we're reducing it by X amount. And to Kathleen's point, not be prescriptive. Figure out what that means, that's the administration's job to figure out what that means for the number of minutes that will be allotted throughout the course of the week and let that work itself out in the schedule. But I don't think we should try to get all creative and such on this point as we were with the motion, because it just doesn't make sense here. Then I'll just drop a further point for this evening. I realize that there's been a lot of hard effort that's gone in between the, from the budget committee to the administration, to the conversations that we've all had and what we're trying to do here. And it's a very difficult process. And everyone out here is listening to this and I appreciate all that you've saying, all that are stayed, those that are online. But this is not easy. This is really hard. All of us have kids in the district. All of this impacts us in one way or the other. And we're trying to balance out what is the best thing to do for the budget, the town as a whole, our kids, not raising your taxes, which is ultimately going to be impacted. And that all affects us in different ways. And this is, this is exceptionally hard. These decisions do not go without a lot of thought process, a lot of deliberation and a lot of angst. So I hope you all can appreciate that. This is the worst part of this job, other than expulsion hearings, which is also the worst part of this job. But I just, so I just wanted everyone to recognize the amount of work that's gone into this. It's unfortunate on all the timing components because I realize we've got to get something done here. But we also have this gap. And what I'm really worried about in the fact that we haven't been able to close the gap is that a budget goes from us to another elected body who has said where they stand on this. And then they get to start making cuts. And what does that look like and how does that impact us? And right now, we have the pen and we have control. And unfortunately, we're not making very much headway. And I want us to give some real thought to that as we continue to deliberate. So those are my comments.
Cody?
I think Kathleen nailed it when she backed away from the first thing and said that we should leave the management of it. And Karen, you echo that to the administration. I just, I think that was a good, we all get excited because when we're thinking through these assumptions, working with Blaze and team, we come up with all these ways to do it. Like my way was, you know, reduce it for two days and let people keep it for three days. But I think the broader point is there's lots of, if we give the administration that flexibility, all we're doing is making an assumption. And so then the question is just, what is a reasonable assumption to make that the administration thinks they can operate within and execute upon? And I think the 200,000 from my discussions on this one seems, you know, reasonable. But by the way.
What is the motion on the table?
I think we're going to, Kathleen, do you want to withdraw?
That was withdrawn.
I will withdraw my motion heavily.
Do you want to redo it and your new one? Because the new one sounded good.
Realignment, I'll make a motion for the realignment of physical education across the district to optimize for, from Greenwich High School to elementary schools to meet.
I thought we weren't adding GHS because.
You just said all students, you just say all students.
Yeah, sorry, realignment of physical education across the district to meet the needs of all students.
A dollar amount.
I assume you're going to just make a motion for a reduction of the line item.
I withdraw and someone else do it because I'm obviously.
I'll do it. I'll try at least. The, so I will make a motion to adjust the current budget for a realignment of instructional minutes related to physical education for an amount of $200,000 reduction.
Sir, a second? I don't know if anybody else has something to say. I just, I just want to point out a few things. I mean, again, I mentioned we had, I had 560, over 560 emails. We as a board, I should say. And the majority of them actually spoke to PE, wanting to retain the 120 minutes, wanting to actually discuss increasing it or having it on more days. And while we're not in a position right now to be adding to our budget, I definitely think it's a discussion to be had for another day. But I think what we're, the other point we're missing is that the time that we have with PE, those, our teachers have used use of that time for planning. They beg us for more time for that. They have time to speak with teachers. They have time to go through all the data that they have in their classrooms to provide a more individualized education for our students in the classrooms when they come out of their specials. That PE time is also important because we have requirements from the state. It's on our state report card. Students are tested in fourth grade and again in sixth grade on their PE and physical wellness. And it's, again, something that we as a district are judged on. They're tested again in high school, but that's a whole nother point. As I mentioned, as much as I'd love to discuss a waiver for varsity or high-performing athletes at the high school, there is a graduation requirement. We have a one-credit requirement for health and safety education and another credit for physical ed at the high school as a graduation requirement. I think it concerns me the most, what are we saying to our students if we were trying to cut PE? You know, is physical health less important than math? That's a philosophical discussion that doesn't need to be had here. I'm just pointing out, Mr. P. mentioned, and I'm not going to try to pronounce your last name again, that offices have gyms. It's true, I know my husband has a gym in his office and they are given actual credits and benefits if they go to the gym every day because it cuts down on their need to go to the doctor and time off, you know, from work. But I don't know, to me, it's just, I also agree that it's not for us to tell our administration how to use their scheduling time in schools. That's for the schools to plan. We're here talking about a budget and debating what areas we think we can reduce to try to meet other needs. That's all.
So I continue to be torn because I do, I think, when it's a $2 million budget, I think that one could actually find $200,000 just generally in creating efficiencies in that. And that's just me putting a pure financial hat on. So I'm not sure how the administration achieves it because again, I really thought my high school idea was something that would work. And I had heard it has from others. So I, and I'm sorry that, and so you're perhaps right. But I had heard that that was a route, which is why I was encouraged by this amount. I think that, I suspect, again, with that large budget, by changing, by reducing it to 200,000, even with changing an enrollment at the elementary schools, which we know is currently happening, that I suspect you'd be able to find 200,000 savings just through natural attrition.
If I could chime in for a minute. Is that okay, Karen? Yeah, okay. Yeah, I think, just to be clear, we are, because we are deviating a little bit from probably the kind, I mean, we've been talking about this at the budget committee level for a couple of months now, for about two months. We're probably deviating from that conversation a little bit. What's the goal of the budget adjustment you're making? Is it to reduce so that we can get closer to the BET guideline? Or with the conversation that I think as chair and basically essentially vice chair that we've been having on some of these are, are there areas as we're continuing the conversation that we want to realign instructional time? For example, the proposal that kind of came through this conversation, this conversation started pre the guidelines even because I think our first budget committee meeting was in November before the guidelines even came out. And this was about more time in K. The proposal from administration was not, there's not really like just money, I would say, that's sitting there. The money proposal that was put forward would be a reduction in minutes because we were going to increase like math, science, and gen ed instructional time. So to keep the logic-driven budget assumption, I think before the board, we're either, you know, in favor of changing the minutes, which has an FTE assumption tied to it for the budget. That gives the direction to the administration on how to implement that. Or we're not changing the minutes and we're not changing the assumption. If the goal is to cut PE for the sake of getting closer to 4.3%, then I think we can also do that. But the conversation, just for clarity, because we have a lot of people listening, has been, we want to change, when Dr. Jones kind of was presenting some of this and presented all the surrounding peer districts, it was about how do we take the strategic plan from the board and target instructional time for math, science, reading, and writing? And we came up with the budget assumption kind of based on that. So there's two different goals. There's hitting a savings guideline so we can get closer to the BET guideline, which has not been, I think, as both of you, as chair and kind of vice chair of the budget committee, that has not really been necessarily the goal of the conversation. It's been realignment of instruction. So I do want to be cautious of cutting for the sake of cutting. It would be more, we're going to make, like, the proposal at the budget committee was cutting because we were going to specifically change the alignment of the minutes. And when Tony did the FTE dollar analysis, what Dr. Jones did was put together, she went through the schedule in extreme detail to come up with like what 80 minutes would look like and what that staffing assumption would be. So if there's like a 100-minute assumption or something like that, but it would be because we want to change instruction time. It's not necessarily, I would caution against just saying, can you cut 200,000 from PE for the sake of cutting 200,000 from PE? I would have some direction behind it if that's the route we're going to go. That's all.
I see Sophie's hand up and then Laura's. Sophie, do you want to?
I think Blaze kind of just said what I was going to say, which is we owe it to the parents of the many hundreds of parents who have written in that they were, was presented to them as a reduction from 120 minutes to 80 minutes. So if that's what we're voting on, that's what we should vote on. And so I agree with Blaze.
Laura.
So I think, again, this was a change in the budget committee that was well intentioned to give more instructional time. Or a discussion about giving more instructional time, which is great. It doesn't grow on trees. However. What this reduction would do is diminish the classroom experience or the school experience. Classroom experience for the children to meet an arbitrary guideline. And I just don't think that that's in the best interest of any of our stakeholders. So I would be a hard no on any dollar amount reduction.
Cody.
Yeah, Blaze, how do you feel? Uh, cause I'm just thinking about the notion of being overly prescriptive to you guys. I know that, um. We had, uh, when we did the estimate of what we thought it would cost to say, uh. Schools that stay on two days, go, go to 80 minutes, but if they go to three days, it's, uh, um, they get a hundred minutes. And we were, you came up with estimate of those 200,000, recognizing that could go up or down. Do you think it's better for you all to have? The flexibility to say, hey, we, we know roughly what we want to do. There's some uncertainty, given that the principals have some autonomy that we don't want to take away. To, I'm just kind of responding to the point of don't just pass a dollar amount, like just to push back on that a little bit. If we pass a dollar amount, does that? I mean, I guess I, I'm hesitant to be, to, to go a little bit beyond that. I feel like you've got. Guardrails from us or some guidance, but. Like I'm, I'm worried about overly restricting, um, you and Tony and everyone. I, I would love to do your feedback on that point.
Yeah, I, I think we're struggling with and probably, I mean. What would be like the 200,000 would really be a tie or using an assumption in the budget of 100,000 per one FTE, one full-time staff. So the assumption, if we were going to go to 80 minutes, um, would be, which is a policy level decision for the board, really would be the 80. Like we're fundamentally changing. We offer 120 minutes. We're going to change to 80 because we want to increase more time because the goal of the school system is, is reading and writing, for example. We, if we were going to go to, uh, the 200,000 would come from like maybe a change to 100 minutes. And that would be a reduction of two FTE in the budget for PE, for example. There's still some logic tied to that number and there's still some direction from the board. I think it is in some areas and I really would, might defer to, to Dr. Jones or, or. Even to Mark on, on some of these areas, it's not, you know, being overly perspective, like saying, you know, you need to have this class. Three days a week, you know, we can give the deferral to the principals to figure out the schedule. But we still need the direction on what is the service offering going to be? And that would be a hundred minutes, a hundred fifteen minutes, uh, 80 minutes. 300 minutes, you know, uh, uh, Dr. Jones, you could maybe correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's the kind of direction. That we do need to then implement it and, and not without being too prescriptive, but I don't think that. You know, necessarily, I think we're deviating from the original. Kind of discussion, which was about increasing reading and writing and math time. And an assumption, the budget assumptions that came with that were kind of tied to that logic. So. The 200,000 would be really tied to still a minute change, which would be a hundred minutes. And that would be the direction that we, that I think there needs to be some direction. On what the curriculum implementation looks like, because we, we don't, we really can't back into like a dollar number.
Just.
Can I ask one question though? When you're done, you have another one too?
One, one fine thing, just since the motion is a realignment, like the, the motion I made was a realignment of instructional minutes with that associated. Reduction in the budget. Is that sufficient or do you want more than that?
I, I, I think if, if that was the route we would go, then I would say that while on record, we would assume that that would be two FTE in a hundred minutes. Is kind of what we would implement from that. So if you were going to vote on that, there's no problem with calling the question. But I, I think just to, for the sake of the minutes, for example, we would take that assumption as a hundred minutes. Is that, is that fair?
But then would you have different ways to achieve that? Like?
Can, can I ask one question? Our health, our PE teachers mandated also to present and give the health curriculum to our students. Is that hundred minutes that you're looking to move from 120 down to 100? Is that including the hours that they are supposed to be? Again, it's mandated. They're, they're supposed to deliver that health curriculum.
Yeah. And I think again, when you look at that chart for Fairfield County, what you see is it's mandated for all of us. So.
I know it's mandated for all of us. I'm asking if we're making a reduction of $200,000. And which changes the number of hours that we're delivering PE, does that include the time that's. They give the health curriculum instruction, which is also ma, is mandated. I, I don't want to compare to Fairfield County. I don't want to compare to anybody else. We consistently say we don't want to compare, you know, in, in that way. I, I'm just asking if that. 120 minutes down to 100 minutes still includes mandated health curriculum, because then that cuts additionally into the. Physical PE time. That's what I'm asking.
And let, and let me add just one thing, and I don't mean this to be disrespectful whatsoever. But at our last curriculum meeting, we spent hours pulling all the Dergay and Dergby information. Because we are asked to compare to our colleagues within this region. And that's why when we went and pulled the data, we had it for PE. Just so that you could see now in every school district, there are nuances that make us all different. Um, next year, a prime example with PE, I have no earthly idea because just the change in pre-K alone. We could have so many fewer kindergarteners next year. We have fewer, we have a, a less need for the kindergarten sections in PE. Because we have more children staying in pre-K where the vast majority do not participate in PE. So, you know, I, I'm probably a little bit more open than Blaze and to me, it's almost like. You know, you're saying try to reduce 200,000 and when we get into August and September, it's up to us to figure it out. And, and that's generally how the budget, it's all based on assumptions anyway. We had 150 elementary children that showed up. We thought we were going to be reducing more K five sections. We couldn't do it because we had all these little bodies we needed classes for. So we deal with that every year annually. So I, I think it's so early in the process. That we're spending a tremendous amount of time arguing about the 200 really, when we really don't know what we don't know. And we don't even know where the budget's going to end up at the end of the year.
So. Does that time include the mandated health curriculum they're supposed to be delivering? Okay. That's all I was asking. Okay.
One more thing. It just occurred to me that there, um, we have, we have a lot of Mondays off. So if you are at one of those schools that has PE only twice a week, you're really only having PE once a week. Is that correct? You have PE on, on Mondays? Yeah. And, and we don't have school and then. You have PE for, for another day that week. That's only PE once a weeks. I don't know. I'm, I'm just trying to say, I kind of like Cody's idea of the three days a week. With the, even though it's a reduction in time. At least there, there's more opportunity to have gym.
So the motion on the table is a reduction of $200,000. Am I correct? So.
Yep.
I don't know if you want to call the question or if anybody else has, I don't disagree. I, we also have a lot of Fridays off. But anyway, I don't know if you want to call the question or if anybody else has a comment that they want to make.
I'm fine to call the question.
Okey dokey. All in favor of a reduction of $200,000? Uh, for PE? Okay. See, I can't see you, Kathleen. Okay. Uh, all who are against, uh. Production of $200,000 for this budget line item. Okay. And there's no abstain, abstention that motion. Oh, you're, oh, sorry. I apologize. I thought I saw your hand up. Any abstentions? Okay. The motion still passes because I think it would, oh, yeah. Four, three. One. Sophie, you can't see her hand. Sophie. That's what I meant. The motion fails. Sorry. This is what happens when I don't sleep. Right. Yeah. So the motion to reduce $200,000, I thank you guys. I appreciate your enthusiasm, but we have a lot more to go and thanks. Okay. So I'm going to.
You guys don't want to state for the budget increases? Yeah, sure. So I'm going to make a motion for a 10% increase to the per pupil allocation for elementary schools, $100,000 increase.
Okay, Kathleen, a second. I don't know if you, if you want to ask a question, but I know I'd asked Dr. Jones, Blaze, to also explain what PPA is for those who may not be fully aware.
Yeah, uh, per pupil allocation just so is the funding mechanism for how we fund the schools. Um, it's probably one of the things we talk about the most during the budget process. Um, and if you'll recall. You know, in Tony's chart last year and in her chart again, you know, this year she kind of shows the, the PowerPoint of the inflation adjusted per pupil, but. The per pupil funding is really the principal's budget for the school-based, you know, budget. And that's really all the expenses. That occur at that school outside of, you know, salary and contractual, uh, obligations, facilities is outside of that. Um, but if you think of basically anything that is the school-based budget, buying paper, supplies, getting things printed. Anything that's at the principal's discretion, um. Comes out of the PPA and, uh, what we have really through the budget committee, if I just kind of sum up a lot of the work again, is. We're really starting to try to tackle a lot of structural, uh, problems with the overall Greenwich Public Schools operating budget. That's kind of been system by system. Uh, there's not this, this notion of like, uh, cutting for the sake of cutting or just increasing. It's trying to tie some logic through things. So one area that kind of, uh, we've highlighted, um, and that the budget committee asked us to really look at in depth was this notion that inflation adjusted, the per pupil allocation has been flat. For more, uh, than 10 years. Um, and so the purchasing power at the schools is decreasing. We've done the most, um, right sizing to enrollment as well at, at, at elementary. Um, in terms of reduction of staffing and sections, um, and pressure on resources. So the budget committee had, uh, taken a vote and it was a four zero. To recommend that the full board increase the elementary per pupil allocation. By 10% and this would be the first increase in over 12 years to the, the per pupil allocation. That whole and all, all 11 schools that comes out to, to less just shy of $100,000. Uh, that is the principal's budget for the whole school. So it's a small, I would say it is a small dollar item. Uh, it's really not even barely a rounding error on the overall budget. But it is a huge impact, um, to the principal at the schools. Purchasing power over the last 14 years with inflation, we're still, we're still off. Uh, where we would be in terms of the principal's purchasing power, you know, 12, 13 years ago. But this is really, I think, an effort to make a step in the right direction at returning, restoring some of that, that spending. Power.
Yeah. My only comment.
Oh, no, you first because that was in the Karen area.
Yeah, just in the reviewing the budget, um, I think we talked about, there can be changes both ways. This just stood out to me as particularly wrong that, um. We hadn't changed it in so long and it's something that is a direct impact of students and it's able to be quite. Uh, malleable in how it impacts the students because it's, you know. It's, it's, um, there's discretion from the principals and the teachers and how it's used. So it just seemed like, I don't think that this is. Going so far as we have to worry about, you know, is this being well spent or is it sort of? It's just like the beginning of a catch-up and we looked at both the middle school, the high school and the elementary schools and the high school had had a more recent adjustment backup, but. The, um, the elementary schools seemed super out of whack and we think that one is a higher impact place. So I think. We might revisit this a few times, like, you know, in the coming years, uh, but this seemed like a very reasonable first step and an adjustment.
Karen.
So. Not that I'm saying I'm, I disagree with the ad, I just, um. I don't understand. Why we're adding to the budget. When it's, we're going through this painstaking process of trying to figure out where we can make. Budgetary modifications on a policy basis when we know we have. And, and it is what it is. We have a delta. And we need to figure out how we're going to bridge that delta. Cause as I said before. Once this budget leaves us, we no longer have control of the pen and it very well may come back to us where. The budget is cut to the, the percentage, uh, that we need to hit, which I think is what 6.5%. That, that we need to hit and it just comes back as a dollar figure and we just have to figure it out. And this gives us an opportunity to have a little bit more voice to do it. So I'm just interested in how this all kind of came about as from a budgetary perspective of. Let's add $100,000 instead of figuring out a ways in which we can find, you know. A way to bridge, you know, to get rid of the delta.
Does anybody, Cody?
Yeah, I think it's a really valid point and it's sort of a. I think reasonable people could disagree about the approach because obviously I feel that there's a lot of waste in other areas. Failed to be convincing of that, uh, but I still think that, uh. And again, I wouldn't fault anyone for screaming with me about this, but. A lot of times there's a few line items that get perpetually beat up upon because of other stuff. And this one stood out to me as perhaps the most robbed in terms of a line item. Like it just doesn't make sense that this hasn't moved in a decade or what, what was it 12 years? Yeah. Um, and so the idea was to fix that because I think a broader goal from the budget committee standpoint is to. Restore a certain degree of trust and integrity and how we do it so that if we think something's wrong, we're going to address it regardless of what it is or regardless of. How many people show up to meetings with pitchforks or whatever. Uh, and in this case, this one I found was, you know. But. Yeah, actually you're right. No cookies tonight. What a shock. Uh, and this one I just thought was totally out of whack. And so, you know, I don't fault anyone for saying, well, we, we should, you know. We gotta fix the other areas first. My, my takeaway from it, and I think the, the, I don't want to speak for everyone else in the budget committee was just that this is. The right thing to do and it's a good way to restore credibility and that we shouldn't, you know, rob, you know. We shouldn't rob certain line items because we can't, you know, get our act together on other ones. But again, I, I'd understand if folks disagree with that.
Yep.
I, I, I do think this speaks to, to the theme that, that, uh, Cody's been, been trying to, and Kathleen has been trying to get at all night and said. This is less about, um, using this process just to drive cuts and it's more about. Um, optimization and efficiencies. And the idea here is what we've, um, covered is, is, is a funding stream that's. Been marginalized. And, um, if you look at. Where other districts have been successful, the, um, um, even if you go to Bloomberg in New York, um, this is what we did, right? Pushing more decision-making power down to the local level, um, so that. Uh, building leaders can have more discretion on how to use the funds appropriately. Uh, within regions, this is not, this is still a, a very small portion of the budget. But I think it makes a lot of sense of from, um, getting a bang for your buck, basically, you know, the more of these dollars where they're spent. In as much as that we can spend, um, localized at the building level. Um, the more you're going to have more effective use of the money. This is thinking.
Karen.
I don't disagree with the analysis on trying to optimize the budget and the fact of what. Both Cody and Kathleen have been doing, but. We as a board aren't doing that. We're not optimizing the budget. We've, there were proposals of which. Where we thought we could optimize, which made sense from, you know, allocating, you know, more. Educational time by taking away from the PE time. There was a way in which to optimize in order to take away the K through 12, uh, K through, sorry, K through two. To focus in on. More of the academics for at Julian Curtis and we're not doing that. So. The thought process of optimization, I get it, but it has to be a balance. It has to be a given, a take. And I don't see that happening here. So I'm against, uh, like, well, I don't disagree with the ad and I do think that. There should be more resources allocated on a school by school basis that the principals have in order to address. Needs because we're always getting emails about the need for supplies and sending it, but. If you're going to optimize the budget, it has to be a whole, a holistic optimization and we're not doing that here. And what's ultimately going to be added, what happened the end of tonight is it's just going to be, it's going to be added of another $100,000, which. which doesn't achieve any goal in which we needed to do. And again, running afoul of what, you know, the, I understand that there, there's a divergence of who agrees with the guidelines and who doesn't. And I'm not saying which way, but if we don't get to a some point, again, we lose control of our own budget. And it's more likely than not, we're going to come back and it's going to be, we're cut six and a half million dollars, deal with it. So we either deal with it now or somebody else is going to do it for us. Because this is an optimization.
I would just like to point out, I mean, one of the things that I know I had mentioned when Karen and I were talking the other day, but we're doing things a little unorthodox in an unorthodox manner this year. I don't know, in all the years I've been here, I can't ima, I, I don't remember a budget not being approved by the board prior to the end of the year. And we asked for a little extra time to do a deeper dive because we're trying to be really thoughtful about this. And what I had said was, you know, we can pass something, I know we have to give it to, to the town so they can add it to Munis so that it can be presented by the selectmen for selectmen to the BET. And then we have time before, well, the BET dives into it. And then we will have our day to sit in front of the BET and defend our budget. And there's a lot of time there where some of the things that we've talked about here is other reductions. We can, we have the time to do a little more discussion and, and, and looking at. And if we feel that there's an option to actually reduce some of these things because we've, that we've discussed, but we didn't have the time to really do a deep dive for data now. I think that's a perfectly, you know, something that we could probably do and say to the BET, this is what we passed. But we've actually done a little more looking and we found other ways to optimize and make some other reductions and hand that to them. So that's just, I mean, if, if we're looking at something that's unique and different and we're doing things that are a little different than in the past, that was one of my thoughts. So I, I actually love the idea because this hasn't been moved up in many times. And I have a suggestion on where we can find that money that's already in the budget. So that's just a thought, but I appreciate that you and Kathleen, I can't see you Kathleen, but I'm talking to you. I found, looked at this and, and this is an overlooked area that we don't talk much about. And I appreciate that you guys took the time to explain PPA to those out there watching that may not have understood what that meant. So thank you.
Yeah, the one other important point is a lot of these structural changes and Blaze had a slide on this were already implemented in the budget that Tony put forward. Like she was, you know, incorporating a lot of these things. That's why all this discussion that I don't, I won't editorialize again on all the comments made about it. But, uh, yeah, so I think, I don't know, I don't think we need to beat this one any, anymore.
Does anybody else have comments, thoughts now? Do you want to call the question?
Sure, can I do that?
If you feel like it.
I'll call to question.
All right, all in favor of the addition, 10% increase to PPA? Okay, all against? Okay, so that passes. Seven one. Cody, did you want to talk about the next item?
So the next one is going to be interesting because only, yeah, let's, I'll make a, I'm going to make a weird motion and then I'll explain it. I would make a motion to reduce the budget by 179,520 related to the extended day at HAMAV.
I will gladly second that. That was going to be my motion.
Yeah, and then the commentary is actually very enthusiastic about this idea. It's something that came out as part of our budgeting process of asking the question of where, if, if you had more money to spend, where would you spend it? Which sounds like a silly and obvious question for budgeting, but a lot of the budgeting happens so siloed that no one thinks about the trade offs. And so this is something that we're exploring. It's a policy implication and it's a policy implication that I think, you know, we'll want to weigh in on more as a board. It's not as simple as something, some of the earlier things that I still couldn't get there anyways. So it's not appropriate to approve now, but we wanted to put it on this page and make it part of the budget conversation as a preview. And also, you know, so that it's transparent, so that if we end up approving at some point in the year that the BET and other folks are aware of it. But I think it's actually a really cool idea and probably one of the higher impact areas we could spend money, especially for dollars spent that aligned with the strategic plan. So, but, but the reason I made the motion to subtract it is because it was an accident that it ended up in the budget. It wasn't supposed to be there. So this would just be correcting basically a clerical error.
I don't know if anybody else has anything they want to say, but pretty much said exactly what I was saying. This is a much deeper discussion that we need to have and because we do, we really didn't. And I knew even at the Budget Committee, when you guys talked about it, it was sort of a, a quick, quick discussion. And I didn't know that some of this money was already in our budget. So I was going to say, till we have that discussion, I think, and, and it could be the greatest idea ever. We just haven't discussed it. So I know Mike wants to say.
Well, is, so the 179 is in there, the, the, the extended school year funds below it, that's, is that not, is that in the, but that's not.
No, no.
Okay.
Does anybody else have a, Karen?
Yeah, I kind of want to understand how this ended up in the budget without any information to the board in advance that there was this thought that there was going to add, you know, the 179,000 for an extended day.
I, so we looked into that because we were very concerned about it too. It basically, and I have the line item. It, it, it had to do with the iterations of the budget before it was submitted and the way it was labeled. It, it, it's like regular teacher salaries slash teachers. It's like a very, it, Blaze, correct me if I'm wrong, but it, it was, it was just an accident. It wasn't like a shadow kind of like, oh, how can we sneak this in? It was in, in the team passing around the various versions before the official budget came forward. It, it got, it was labeled in a way that it wasn't easy to catch. That, that was it. But to the team's credit, they did catch it, you know, before this meeting.
Yeah, you, you build a budget like maybe Dr. Jones builds a budget with, with, you know, starting, we have a bunch of goals and objectives that every single department submits up to administration with all of their requests for what would be a program. And then we collectively as a unit balance out all of the submissions throughout the whole district up to us, systematically go through all of those recommendations and then basically come forward with the percentage that's 6.5%. And then, you know, this year has been, has been a big year of upheaval and kind of the way that we're fundamentally doing the whole budget. Reorganizing, you know, we know exactly kind of how many people work here now. We've gone through and really systematically kind of cleaned up a lot of the data. The whole budget process this year, especially thanks to, to Patrick, is, was a totally different budget process that we used. You know, from ground up, starting in June. So you think of all the budgets being submitted up, then you, you phase and scrape everything out every single row by row, you know, all 12,000 rows. We do, unlike, I think, I think it might've been you actually, Karen, that just mentioned that this is a very difficult process publicly. And I think that's especially true for the Board of Ed compared to the rest of the town where most of what the town's doing when they're preparing the first selectman's budget happens, you know, behind closed doors in the first selectman's office. Here, that doesn't really happen. It's extremely transparent and I think we've taken some steps to make it even more transparent, which is probably why it feels a little bit, you know, even more contentious on some of these things this year, more than maybe in the last couple of times. Because we're, we're really trying to put this whole process, you know, on display from scratch. So that's kind of what I would add.
I don't know what you guys are talking about. I love this process.
I just, so is, is it the 179 or is it the full 385?
179.
So the other items below it are?
Those would have been an add.
Oh, so they're, are we taking those?
No, so we're not, or I, I don't think any of us have the desire to make those as addition motions. We are instead just taking out what was mistakenly in the budget.
The, the budget process is going to be super ongoing. And so, you know, next year, I think there will be less complaints of like, oh, well, this is policy, we should already talked about it. The idea is we're going to continue to work on this through the year and we'll try to get some of the policy discussions. The whole idea will be by the time Tony's next budget comes out, like a lot of these conversations will have already been had and it will already be embedded. So that there will be a lot fewer changes. But this is a way for us to be kind of like previewing things that we might expect to bring up, you know, in the next few months.
Yeah, the Budget Committee here, they don't, they don't have a vote on it from the, you guys didn't end up voting on it for that reason, that it would be the, it was a deferment from the committee. Kind of the change in the process too, I think, from it maybe what's happened in the past is the Budget Committee is taking a more active kind of role in making specific policy recommendations and taking votes on them to the full board. And that would be kind of an ongoing process. So this is before you, like the, all the other items that the chair of the committee brought up or items that the, the committee acted on, this one, the committee didn't act on at the December 20th meeting yet and a deferment for ongoing process.
Can I, I know Karen, you have a question, but I just wanted to point out, when I had asked, I'd reached out to Dr. Jones because I was like, this, this is new. We haven't talked about it. And I asked where it was in the budget because it notes that it was already within the proposed budget. And then Patrick pointed out to me as to where it is. So in the budget itself, it says it's a placeholder of 200,000. So the question is, do we need to change the motion or adjust the motion to withdraw the 200,000 as opposed to the actual 179, 179,520?
Yeah, that, that I would do that.
I'm just checking because it was, uh, on the, in the budget book, it was, it's page 100 and it was line 113. It says 200.
Yeah, coding, amend your motion to be 200,000.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, so that's.
Yes.
I'll withdraw my motion and amend the motion to be, change the budget to remove the extended day for HAMAV, an amount of 200,000.
Yeah, I'll second that.
So I just have a, a follow up question. And this question is not meant to be judgmental, but given the fact that air, the budget is, you know, 182 million dollars and we found the line item of 200,000, do we anticipate that there would be any other line items that we would want that are also mistakes, given the process? And how would we know about that? Given this late time of year in the budget process?
I'm going to make an abstract response or offer an abstract response and Blaze can offer something. But I think because this wasn't an intentional mistake, that we could, it's not unreasonable to make the assumption that mistakes in the budget are going to be, the, the error rate of those is probably averages at about zero, that to the extent there's errors, they could cut both ways. And you'd expect over, you know, the many line items in the budget that it would cancel out. That's like where I would draw comfort from that, but.
I, I, I think that's a very reasonable way to look at, at the overall budget. I am probably this year, I would say extremely confident in what's coming before you. I think we're, we're starting to get to a place where we're really confident in the staffing data. We've had a very low kind of error rate, swing rate compared to maybe some, some prior iterations of the process. As Cody mentioned, there would be some, in a budget like of this size, you would kind of make that assumption throughout the process in a minor area. It would be, it would be nothing of like a intentional substance or errors that would be, um, this year. I, I think you should be comfortable in really the direction that we're heading with the amount of data analysis and kind of this open process that we're using. You know, that this is a very, a very minor item.
Can I call to question?
Please, I'm, I'm down for that unless somebody else has something they want to say. Anyone? Okay, all in favor of the reduction of 200,000? See if I can save Sophie's, look at that eight zero, nice.
In the spirit of Joe.
Joe would be thrilled. This is in his honor. I haven't been sitting here doing the math. I think, I hope Kathleen or Cody have.
Cody, I mean, Patrick has it to the.
Oh, good, because we need to make a motion, obviously, to accept the budget at a specific dollar amount.
Do you want me to make it and see if I got it right, Patrick?
Before we do that though, is there anything anybody else wants to discuss that's in or not in the budget? Okay, Laura?
Um, so on one of the sheets that we have gotten, which I think is from, what, it says as of November 30th. But it has the Cardinal Stadium hours, is the operation of the stadium not in our op, operating budget? Like our stadium rental fees?
I'm not sure I'm following that. Wha, wha, which one are you looking at? What, what's the question?
So are the rental fees for the stadium, the operation of the stadium included in our budget?
No, we, we had, there is, in the current Board of Ed approved fee, there is not a specific fee for the stadium. And one of the assignments that the Budget Committee had said that they were going to take up next is a total revamp of the fee structure. That was one of the items that we were hoping, uh, because we're, we're the, um, there's no stadium specific fee. There's no, uh, the fee structure is from the old PAC. And the student center has been totally redone and has the old fee structure. And then the actual underlying fee structure is not necessarily one, it hasn't been updated in about six years. So the committee I talked about taking up the fees, because normally you approve your fees in September for the next year, you haven't approved fees yet. Karen, I know you had a, a lot you wanted to.
No, no, I was going to say it was presented, something was presented to us and we asked not to vote in it because the Budget Committee wanted to take a crack at it. Around budget season and we haven't increased fees for any of the rentals. That hasn't been commensurate with the change in, in hours and cost for our support staff as well either. So I, I'm looking forward to seeing.
Tuition as well, usually do tuition and fees in September. And so tuition has, is out of alignment over the last few years.
Smiling. Like about ways, ways to increase revenue.
Yeah.
I like it.
Prices are not going down.
And some of the direction you had given to at the time with the stadium was because you wanted us to look more at with parks and recreation with the way that we build the field user fee from the town for the, the field versus the rental of the stadium. And so we had tabled it to be a, a much more comprehensive effort.
Well, thank you for that and I look forward to hearing how the Budget Committee tackles that issue. Pun intended. So Kathleen.
Committee is never going to, never sleeps, we're just going to keep going.
So Kathleen, since you have the number.
Is it, well, Patrick, am I right?
Okay.
Oh.
What was it, 192?
So I'd like to make a motion for the budget, 2025 budget of 192,624,020.
Ooh, and 20 dollars, no sense, very sad. The motion is to approve the, the overall budget for FY 2425 at, yeah. Is that the correct figure?
Is that headed or just going to leave it hanging out there?
Nope, no, I'll second it and I just didn't know if Cody wanted to. I'll second it, it's fine.
I was spacing out.
That's fine, I'll, I'll second it, so.
Can I make one comment?
Sure.
So in the interest of keeping things solid to my pro forma numbers, that 192 less money returned to the town per budgeted is a pro forma for 2425 of 188,840,550 compared to the same money returned to the town, actuals plus the special education interim, 2.1 of the number I'll repeat again of 180 million, 911,543 is an actual increase of 4.4%.
I, I, I think that's pretty close.
About the percentage.
But you might use for revenue, I think if I was going to do it that way, this is just, since we're thinking out loud, I would use the change in revenue rather than the revenue back, because they already, okay, so that's the 249,000.
Yeah, I know, I was gonna be apples, apples, yeah.
Okay.
I wanted to cheat, but that wouldn't have been the.
Okay, sorry, I thought you said three million earlier.
The fundamental change.
Yes.
Is the actuals of adding the special education.
The 249.
Frankly, if you were running it, you know, if you were trying to do projected earnings like a company would do, they would in fact make the money to the town projected to be larger than you are. You really actually didn't get any mileage out of the 2025, but that's because you're an honest man. So.
Does anybody else have any comment or, which is fine. And before we call the question? Anyone, anyone? Okay, I'm going to call the question. All in favor of the motion to accept the operating budget 192,624,020? I can just look and see Sophie. Okay. Okay, those who are against? Okay, and I believe that means no abstentions, so it passes 6-2. I would just like to make one comment and I know I mentioned it before and Karen was, was out of the room. But I definitely think, even though we, we have been doing this in a rather unorthodox manner, we have a new way of sort of looking at it and I think is fantastic as to how you guys are approaching it. I also think means that we have the opportunity should we, because we'll be handing this over to the selectmen, but before we defend it in front of the BET. or we defend it in front of the BET. If there are other efficiencies the Budget Committee or Dr. Jones finds, or especially even things that may not have passed. I think it would be helpful for us and we can always suggest that we found these efficiencies before they, before we go to defend them. So, I mean, that's just a thought. I still think we can.
Oh, yeah, we will be coming back with more stuff.
That sounds good.
I, I will also add on what you voted tonight. We didn't go through it because we kind of went a little bit of a different route, but I think it was also a very good conversation. But Patrick did prepare, um, some really extensive analysis about what you voted on tonight and what's in the budget and some really helpful ways to look at it. To maybe like turning kind of that 192 million into something that's very visual. And so we will, uh, post that on our budget page and we can also share it with you, um, as well. Because I, I do think as we now transition the process in our submission to the town and we talk about what's in the budget and what we're still looking at, um, just to give Patrick a lot of credit. Well, well, it's a very helpful way to look at how we broke out the 190. There was really a lot of extensive analysis. Also, we got a lot of questions, I think, still on, um, staffing and FTE numbers. Um, and that was a large, I think, piece of conversation. Many of you actually submitted some questions about staffing and the growth in the FTE. And in that document that we'll share, we won't go through it now, given the hour. There's some very helpful, uh, understanding, like a way to look at staffing, both for the ARP and also staffing over the last 10-year period on FTE. You'll also see from our data that I think if you're looking at the budget, there's, there's not a lot of confidence in a lot of the older FTE numbers. What we've done with the town, uh, and, and, you know, Roland and I, uh, came up with the standard FTE definition so that everyone is using the exact same definition of FTE, for example, on teachers. For all positions, so that way the town's budget book and our budget book, everyone uses the same definition rather than like a headcount, you know, confusion versus like an FTE full-time equivalent. And you can also see that in the actual spending. The numbers that have maybe been in the book, especially going back maybe 10 years are not, there, there's just no way that the number of FTE changes over 10 years align with the actual spending. It's just mathematically like impossible. So I think that'll be a very helpful tool. Going forward from this budget that we just adopted, FY 25 going forward, I think we have a really good standard. And this year, just for clarity, the staffing that was used, uh, is directly from ADP. So we have a defined source going forward and defined definitions on FTE. And so this year, I think we can be significantly more confident in those FTE numbers, but as you're having conversations with a lot of other folks and you're looking at historical FTE, it's almost more helpful to look at the actual spending, uh, on salary than it is to look at FTE because the, the, the definition and, and where that information came from can be challenging.
Can I just add to just, when we talk about headcount, which is something they use here all the time, that really is the way a school district cares about it in that if I need a part-time Spanish teacher and a part-time French teacher, we post two positions, we need two people. So we would look at that like two on the school side. So when we talk about the inconsistency over the years, that's depending on who was in the office. The town looks at it, if it's a point five and a point five, it's one. That's one FTE. And I think it's confusing for a lot of people because it's one full-time equivalent. And they basically use 35 hours, even though we don't really work 35 hours either. But it's different and that's why we've discovered we weren't using the same vocabulary, basically, between the town of Greenwich and the school system. And Blaze has done a great job getting that corrected with the town.
I was going to say before we wrap things up, I want to give a huge, huge, huge thank you to Dr. Jones, Blaze, Patrick, our entire Budget Committee, Cody, Mike, Kathleen and Laura, because you guys, and, and all of our administrative administration, because you guys have done an incredible job. This was, you know, a, a monster to hand off to us. And then we've come back with 150,000 types of questions and from every angle. So I really appreciate all the work that you guys have done and, and will continue to do. So it's a really, you know, big thank you from us. So I don't know if anybody else has anything to say before. Or who wants to call the, the question of the night? Lada?
I have a motion to adjourn.
Mike, looks like he really wants to second that. Okay, uh, all in favor? I'd be shocked if anybody said no. Well, thank you. Thanks to all out, out there who've been watching and listening and hopefully more to come.